Good afternoon, Littleton. Welcome to the, what is it, June 9th meeting of the Select Board for our Goals. We'll start as we always do with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Clerk?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The agenda is pretty simple. We're going to review our goals for the year. I got feedback from a couple of you that the goals matrix that we've used in past years was a little bit cumbersome to work with, so I'm trying something new. And I have this document here, which I have up on the screen, which has just as a different organization and a little bit more information. Everything that you all put into the matrix is in this document. I moved a couple around a little bit, but I didn't change anything. And my idea is that we'll collaborate on this document right now, figure out, you know, who owns things and hopefully timelines. I can put them into this doc during the discussion. Some of the goals in here are more defined than others, and they're all based on what you put into the matrix and what we talked about at our Department Heads meeting. And then after the meeting, after I do the spell check, I'll give it to Anthony and he can distribute it. So I'd really like to try to stick to defining the goals and not getting into solutioning it, because I think that we won't get through them if we do that. I would like to have the goals be practical, so measurable, you know, specific as the acronym says, and with a due date, but that's not always possible, and I understand that. The one thing I do want to say is, don't commit to a goal if you can't commit to it. I'd rather that we don't do one than we say we're going to do one and we don't. Or if you get stuck in the middle, please let the rest of us know so we can help pick up the slack. And then I, my focus on this, this year is going to be getting us caught up and compliant with some of the administrative stuff that has come up in the last few weeks with all the meetings that we've been having. And that's why my name is on the first few goals here. If you were, someone else is desperate to do some of these, I'm happy to hand them off, but I feel like you all should be out in the sunlight getting the glory and I'll be hunched over a computer screen in a dank basement.
Can I just interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
I can't read this.
Okay.
I don't have my glasses. Do you have a hard copy of this?
I don't have it.
I have no idea what we're looking at.
Okay.
I can't see it either.
You can't see it either? I can print it out, but I'd have to print it out here and, or-
If we could get a printed copy, that would be helpful, because I don't know what we're talking about.
Okay.
You could probably, you can zoom, right?
I can zoom.
Is that Anthony on that one?
Well, it's me. I mean, I can zoom.
I mean, I'm just nearsighted, so I-
Well, so is that, is that feasible?
I can't read that.
No?
I don't even know you.
I'm pretty blind. And there's a glare, too.
Can I just email it to Matt or I'll go print it?
Yeah, I can email it to you and you can print it. Sounds good.
What does SMART stand for?
It's an acronym.
It's an, "Specific, Measurable, Achievable, Relevant, and Time-Bound."
Okay, all right, yeah, no, I really can't see that.
Word doc, is that word doc good?
Sure, should be.
Remember back when we had a guy over here that we could say, hey, could you go print these out?
I remember that.
Good old days.
I will be sending it to you.
Make sure three points of contact, hand on the reeling, safety first.
Okay, so I guess we're just going to wait for Anthony to get back down.
I mean, it's stuff you just want to read. You have stuff you-
Um, I mean, I could start just reading them, I guess.
Or just, yeah, kind of the understanding with the SMART goal.
Oh, I can do, yeah, so SMART stands for, S is specific, what will, specifically what will be accomplished and how, what actions will we take to accomplish them? Measurable, how are we going to tell whether a goal has been completed or not? Achievable, do we have the skills and resources to do it? Relevant, how does the goal align with our broader goals? And time-bound, what's the timeframe or due date for accomplishing it? I don't think that we'll be able to put all of those into every goal that we come up with today, but as many, as many as possible with a due date would be great. My personal desire would be for us to have specific things that we deliver on a regular basis and review, maybe at every meeting we do one or two of them and someone comes, one of us comes in with a report or an update on what they have done for their goals. But yeah. That's what I have.
This is not good television.
What's that? This isn't good television? Yeah, well-
I mean, you get to roll the captain, that's something you knew.
Um, yeah.
Is that specific to how we're going to-
I mean-
We've had that in the past.
Yeah, so, you know, some of these goals, like the one that's here, for example, this is one that I, like, the administrative items that we identified by talking to the Department Heads and at the retreat. So things like a calendar, which you brought up Cindy, which is a great one, training for, for board members, goals for, goals for Anthony, all of those I would say fall under the heading of, you know, administrative, keep the Select Board operational and on task, and I would be the captain of that goal, and then there's some subtasks under there. You know, Anthony would be probably responsible for identifying training and organizing it. But my role in that would just be to make sure that everything is moving forward and reporting back to the board and, you know, facilitating if possible. I can't. But yes, I think it would be, obviously, you all need to be able to see it, so.
I wish we had the, you added another category, goals identified at Select Board Retreat and Department Head meetings.
Yeah.
We could have, if we had known that was an additional category, we all could have spoken to that in the matrix.
Or is this all the-
Well, so I thought about that. So I was, I was, you know, I thought about the fact that a lot of these, reorganizing these, like, it verges on deliberative if you're sending me opinions about what the goal should be and I'm responding. So I think that this is the right place to, to organize them.
Maybe it should have just been under everybody, since it was, it was something that we did deliberate in an open meeting. So it just should have been across all of us, because if they were identified at the Select Board Retreat and at the Department Head meetings, it should have been under everybody's.
It should have been on everybody's.
Yeah, like, I didn't know that was a category with the matrix that we had received.
So it just should have been ditto, 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 because it was identified at a retreat that we did collectively. We did deliberate.
Yeah.
We spoke about it.
Yeah.
And it was at another meeting that we had with the Department Heads in this room. So it just, it was, rather than it being Matthew's stuff, it's all of our stuff.
Well, we could also talk about what we, if you, we think you missed something, too, right?
Yeah, like, this is just my, this is my best shot at trying to-
Because I know you took notes, I think.
Yeah, so I'm, but I'm not sure I understand what you're saying, Chuck. Like, this was in the goals matrix that I sent out.
No.
Category, that was not a category.
That category wasn't in it?
No.
No. That, that's my point.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, that's a new category. We would have all commented on that.
Well, what we need two days ago.
No, but if we had known it was a category, we would have commented on it.
So I think, I think what Matthew's saying is, the document that you can't read on the screen, he took this one and turned it into a different format.
Right.
So as, if, as we're going through the other document, if there's either things that are missing, as in for full goals, or these are like, subtasks within a goal, we should add them.
Well, I think it's, we need to break it down into two things. We haven't actually talked collectively about the discussion that we had with the Department Heads. There was a lot of information shared with us during that meeting. We have not recapped-
Correct.
-after having that meeting to say, let's talk about what the Department Head shared with us. There was a lot of information that they shared. There was commonalities between departments that might align with our goals, which ones align with our goals, which ones don't, are there other areas we should be looking at? You know, I would like to have that discussion as part of this process.
We can, I mean, we have that, we have the, you know, we have categories for the administrative stuff, but there's several others in there, too, which match up with those. And I think, Mike, okay, look, my, my understanding was that you all put those, your goals into the matrix that you wanted to accomplish this year.
Based upon a prescriptive list of, of goals that were-
Categories.
Other was in there, but then it was, it was kind of, so I guess, to piggyback on what Cindy was saying, there was, this was, historically, when we do goals, it's a collective process. It's not, the Chair doesn't decide that this is the way we're going to do it this year, and I applaud you for all the effort and time that you put into this, but we're five members. No one, no one of us, as we, as we all know, and was reiterated on Monday night at our retreat, no one of us acts alone or has the authority to tell the others what to do, essentially. So just in, sticking with that and collaboration, I think more discussion around, this is the format that I propose, is this something that everybody's comfortable with. Couldn't do that via email, because it's an open meeting law violation.
Right.
So I think we all just kind of complied and filled in based upon the categories that you prescribed. And I think that this meeting is where a lot of that should have come to-
So actually, those weren't categories I prescribed, those were categories that existed in the old goal matrix, which I got feedback like, well, this isn't, this is too rigid, or this doesn't cover the things that I want, and so that's why I changed. And, like, look, none of this is set in stone. If this process isn't right, then we'll change it. This is the first chance any of us have had to talk about this.
Right.
And so my, my opinion is, this is going to be a more effective way for us to define the goals, and-
That's one opinion, though.
Yeah, it's my opinion.
I mean, SMART goals, I'm familiar with SMART goals.
Yeah, but, but even, even if these weren't SMART, as the Chair, I'm, I'm going to run the meeting, and I'm going to set the agenda, and we're going to, you know-
I mean, I guess my point, if I may, is, the goals identified at Select Board Retreat and Department Heads, I wish that the entire board had been given the opportunity to realize that was a category as part of this process.
I guess I don't understand why having it be a category is different from you, you know, giving me your goals for the year.
Because it's a new category.
None of us debriefed either. None of us spoke about that meeting that happened, the end of last week.
So can I ask why it makes a difference?
Yeah.
We're going to set the goals right now, so if, if there was something on the matrix that you didn't feel would, if there's something you want to add, we can still add it, right? So-
Yeah, let's just go ahead and see.
I mean, we can, so, I was one of the ones that commented that I thought this format was really hard, because it makes it seem like everyone's doing everything, and there's, since everyone was filling it out individually, I had no idea what anyone else was signing up to do. Right? So I'm, when I filled this out, I put down the things that I, not necessarily that I wanted to accomplish, but I thought the Select Board needed to accomplish, but it still has my name on the column. Right? That doesn't mean that I'm signing up to do it. Right? So that's the problem I have with this sheet. And I was hoping that the other sheet, and like I just saw it now, too, kind of solves some of that problems, right? So that we can say, who's actually signing up to do it, rather than having, you know, what, what it looks like I'm signing up to do on this sheet.
Which you are.
Well, that's not-
Well, no, I think that's what we're going to-
That's the way the sheet's designed.
That's why I'm saying it's the problem with this sheet, is I'm not necessarily, I mean, there's no way I'm accomplishing everything that I said on the sheet.
No, and so that's why-
But we, as a board, should accomplish a lot of it, right?
Well, it, it depends, but are you going to be the goal champion?
Right, well, there's nothing on this sheet that says who's the champion.
We can decide that tonight. I mean, that's what this meeting, that's what this meeting is for.
That's part of the process, yeah. Exactly.
And we can trade champions, and we can change the goals, and we can change who owns the subgoals, and we can, you know, remove them, or anything that you want.
I mean, I guess my point is, if I had known that goals identified at the Select Board Retreat and Department Head meeting was going to be a category, I would have added a lot of information to it, and I would have liked time to prepare to add that information, is my only point. So we can just, we'll go forward, I have a bunch of notes, and I'll see what I can pull from that.
I guess, I don't, I don't, I guess I'm confused. If, why didn't, why, I mean, and now, this is an accusatory, why didn't you add the goals that you wanted to do to, to the document when I, when I sent it around? And I'm not saying you did anything wrong.
Because I don't know that they're necessarily, so we met with the Department Heads, right?
Yeah.
They all talked about, there was commonalities between their goals.
Right.
Right? So I figured we would have a discussion about our discussion with the Department Heads, and then figure out, hey, this is the feedback they gave us based on the goals matrix that we've already put together.
I guess we could, we could, I mean, so I identified a lot of the Department Head goals, and we can definitely have that debate tonight, and if I miss some, we can absolutely add them.
Right, so-
I just, I figured everybody would put all their goals in, like, is what I, is sort of what I thought when I assembled this document.
So can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Just going, you have this list, this printed out list.
Yeah.
Can we just go through the, the high-level goals really quickly and say how they map to these others, before we go through the action items on them?
Yeah.
Because that might make it easier as we're going through.
Can I, if I may, can we just have a moment to read this?
Sure.
I think this is like a multi-page document, we just were presented.
Yeah.
I would just like to read through it before we start talking about it.
Well, I think that's sort of what Mark is suggesting, is we just go through it quickly and, and just talk about the headings, to see if there's stuff that you feel is missing or that's miscategorized, or-
Okay.
But if you want to, if you want to take a few minutes and just read, that's fine with me as well. Whatever you're comfortable with is cool.
Matthew, they have the chopped off printing, that box. I'm looking at the Word document, and I'm just trying to figure out how to squeeze that in.
Oh, maybe you need to switch it to, like, landscape.
How it did-
How much stuff got chopped off, like words or whole sections or-
Oh, scroll up, like, I don't-
Which one, which, oh.
On the first box. So, like, the first box, everything to the right of anything.
So just this much here?
Yeah, everything, so like, the last inch.
It's not even, we can almost figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a half a word.
Yeah.
It's okay. We'll be able to film that. When, just out of curiosity, when, when this idea originate, originate goals in general? Is this like what all these done goals?
As long as I've been on. And it's, it's always been a, you know, like, big pillars that were, would, anything that we do should be in some way, shape, or form supporting the goals that we've, we've assigned, you know, to the, to the board for the town, you know? So it's, you know, much of it is aligned with the master plan.
This year-
Many of the goals of the last several years have been aligned with the master plan.
And this year, more so with management, because I don't think we've ever been difficult to discuss it, right?
We have done some interaction with management, not to level them, but we've shared it.
I think that's one of the reasons why I wanted to do the switches, it felt like the master plan was, the master plan categories were constricting a little bit, because there were a lot of things in that Department Head meeting especially, and, and in the retreat, that didn't really fit into the categories that were in the master plan. The master plan is obviously very much about town development, but there was a lot of stuff that came out about staffing and, you know-
Well, you wouldn't see it.
Roles and responsibilities that we just, that wasn't in the master plan.
Well, staffing's part of the master plan.
Administrative is, yeah.
Yeah, there's categories, I'll talk about that.
So, okay.
All right, so go ahead, because this is going to take me forever.
So I'm, I'm just going to start by reviewing the, the first one, for example. So administrative items from the Select Board and Department Heads. The calendar, which Cindy, you have sent us a draft version of it. Revive the calendar to include everything mentioned in the goals matrix, and other things we haven't thought of, like HCA payments, budget process, the budget calendar, town meeting warrants. And I would like very much to have some kind of interactive shared calendar, so we can have these dates and see them and include them in the packet. To your point earlier, which is that a lot of these things happen, and we sort of, you know, we don't, we don't keep track of things and look ahead to the next month, see what we need to deal with.
Right.
So, yeah, go ahead.
So we're really going to revise the calendar, because we have a calendar.
And also, well, I want to revise, I want to revive it and also find a way to share it with all of us, that we can see it and include it in the packet, or at least a page of it.
Yeah, personally, I think it should be included in every packet.
Yeah.
At the beginning of it, as a reminder to us, just to keep us on track, personally.
So I, so again, I was going to, I'm going to work with Anthony for that, work with Anthony for that.
That's, again, that's prescriptive, that's, there's just a discussion around that, is there anybody else that wants, you know, this-
Well, I, so-
As a Chair, I mean, you can't pick and choose and say, I'm going to do this one, Cindy, you're going to do that one.
It's my strong desire to, to own this, this, this category, to, to do these administrative items. I feel like I can get them done. I'm very invested in, in getting this sort of, I don't know what it's called, administrative stuff working properly for the board in order to make us more effective.
So I think the things that you're having here are on, effectively under the communication aspect on the other one.
In the, in the, in the matrix?
That's just for reference, really.
I think, go ahead.
I'm just trying to math them.
Okay. Both, both Diane and Michelle identified board, board and employee training.
That was actually something that we talked about at our last retreat.
Okay.
When I was Chair, was implementing new board training, and it just never happened. So how are we going to make that happen? Is that-
Who owns it?
I would own, I would own implementing it and work with Anthony and, and either Diane or Michelle to figure out the best way to go forward with it.
Diane Crory?
Yeah, I think so. Diane Crory mentioned the, mentioned the-
Not Dickerson.
No, Diane Crory mentioned the ethics training and that the standard, the state, the state requirements, and Michelle mentioned some of the other.
Well, then I, I mean, I got the email today, the MSA free training for newly elected Select Board members.
Yeah.
It's the time of year, so I mean-
Already done, why create the wheel?
Yeah.
Already done.
Right, it's taking place at Devon's in, in July. We're only going to be two months into our terms. I, I think it's, it might be great for everybody to go to, but, so that's the type of stuff, that's free, so.
Yeah.
And Matthew, if you can just clarify, what do you mean by in HR in alignment with their goals? In alignment with who's goals?
Oh, well, the, the, both Michelle and Diane Crory mentioned that when, when we had the Department Head meeting.
But in, in alignment with their goals, Diane, oh, Diane and Michelle's goals.
If you go back and look at that document-
Yeah, I just, I, when you said their goals, I didn't know if you meant our goals or if you meant their goals.
Um, we need to do Anthony's performance goals, so I need to, I want to schedule a meeting for that and a process for that. We also need to adopt a written procedure for the-
Can we go back to that?
Yeah, sure.
His performance goals should be collective by the whole board, I feel. I don't think it should be you having a meeting with him.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, like, I will be in charge of creating the process. I'm not saying I'm going to do the goals.
All right, to create a process.
Scheduling a meeting to create the process.
It doesn't say process, so I'm going to add process in there.
I'm going to put that in. We need to create a written procedure for the annual performance evaluation for Anthony, the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief.
Yep.
Yep.
That's the same, under the same vein?
Yeah, well, I think so.
And you're going to work with Michelle on that?
I don't know, what do you think? Who else would have, who else do you think would, would have?
And your packet this week is going to be our value, our guide for evaluations, as well as the evaluation tools and everything that the Department has used, so that might be helpful when you get that tomorrow.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
I mean, I guess I, you know, there might be a conversation with Labor Counselor, with, with Donna Brewer about what we need to do legally to, to satisfy your contract or, or, you know, Matt's contract. I don't know, but those are the people I can think of that I would confer with.
Yeah, there's certain deadlines that need to be met-
Yeah.
-in respect to that process. But I just think as far as, like, the forms that we, we use, that we've been using forever in the standard review process, certainly Michelle should be able to work with you on that, maybe in conjunction with Donna Brewer.
Yeah, good one. We talked about creating a policy for Select Board participation and other appointed boards and committees. I would suggest that I could draft a version that we can all discuss at an upcoming meeting.
Is that about not being Chair?
Yeah, I mean, it was about not being Chair, yeah.
Is that something that we all want to consider as a board? Like, I know we talked about it, Chuck wasn't present at that meeting.
Yeah.
It was something, actually, that I had proposed at a meeting, just based on personal experience. I feel we get too bogged down-
Yeah.
...with Select Board duties, and sometimes we just get it thrown at us to be Chair, because no one else wants to step up, so of course we're going to do that as leaders, right? But the other thing, too, is I think sometimes that people look to us and expect us to do that, to go into that role, and we consume, we take over the committee, not meaning to take over the committee. So I just, I don't even know if that's something that we want to consider, because we haven't talked about it as a group.
I don't think we can say, do not do it, but I think we could say, highly encourage others on the, the members to be the Chair, and the, that's what I think.
I think there's absolute value in having others step up to do it, but I do, I do know that this instance is, I've been acting as the Chair of the EBC, because number one, we haven't had a quorum, we haven't been able to organize, and the person that was the Chair is no longer part of the board, so everybody, like you said, looked to me, and I just-
Right.
-posted the meetings and-
Right.
So, so again, I can draft a version of that, and we can all discuss it.
Discussion, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the, I think the intent is a good one.
Okay. And then the same for, you know, we talked about this at the retreat, access to town council, like, let's, like, formalize that in some way. Like, what's the policy for Select Board members who want to access town council? Because we have one for town employees, we don't have one for Select Board members.
What, just out of curiosity, what's it look like for town, for employees? What is-
It has to go through Anthony.
Okay, that makes sense.
For, even Department Heads, I think, have to go through Anthony to get to, to access town council, is that correct?
Yeah, they do, boards and committees.
And I'm not suggesting that we need to do that, but there was Anthony's comment about someone calling Donna Brewer to ask about his contract, and without any, without my knowledge, I think, I don't know if anyone else on the board knew-
No, didn't know anything about it.
So, that's not cool. And so I'd like to not have people do that.
Right.
Okay.
Reporting structure, again, something we talked about at the retreat. I think my first goal would be creating an org chart, and, and I think Mark and Cindy and I were on an email thread where we, we realized that none of the org charts that we have access to are accurate, or current, or even close.
There's so, I mean, working on that, Matthew, honestly, if you look at that chart, there's a lot of detail in there. It's a big project. It's not as simple as it looks, just by looking at our town code and our town website. We had tried to tackle this when Joe Layden was here, and Steve Anoudi was, at that point, a town employee, and I remember sending it over to him, and he fired off many employees that were missed. And there's certain categories, like, I think in one of the charts that you have provided, it was actually an elected board, it wasn't an appointed board, so there's a lot of nuances there that need to be paid attention to.
But, I'm sorry, but I wonder if for our purposes, which is, go ahead.
No, that's what I was gonna get to. So, what do we wanna do with this chart? I mean, we could create multiple charts, like, to Mark's point, do we wanna have a chart that has reporting requirements in it? Do we wanna have just a high-level chart, you know, just for informational purposes? Like, what do we wanna use the chart for?
My intention was to create the chart to help us formalize the TA areas of responsibility. So, we know, even if we have the hiring authority for someone, Anthony is their day-to-day manager and supervisor, and they report through Anthony to us, because that is the important, I think, distinction on, like, how we clarify what Anthony's day-to-day responsibilities are and where the board should get involved or not.
So, that's, that is written in the town code already, so that would definitely be useful, because it's some of the, and it's interesting, too, like, some of the appointments and hirings are joint, they're not solely Anthony's responsibility, so what do you do in that situation?
So, I think that that would be, that's why I wanna write down the next one, which is draft areas of responsibility for the board. So, regardless of what the bylaws say about who that person officially reports to or who manages it, we need to understand what actually happens day-to-day and agree on it.
Right.
That's what, that was my, and that definitely came out of our retreat, as something we discussed-
Yeah, no, it did.
I mean, at the end-
What you mean by areas of responsibility will be interesting.
Well, I guess, I mean, I'm, yeah, that is a loaded, I guess that's slightly loaded, but I think what it really comes down to is, the policy says day-to-day, day-to-day operation is Anthony's domain. What does that constitute? If we go talk to a town employee, is that interfering with the day-to-day operation? In some cases, maybe, in some cases, yes, in some cases, no.
Right. And I totally agree that that needs to be more defined.
Okay.
I just don't wanna personally get us into a situation where a town employee feels that they can't come to the select board about anything, because we've had in a situation in the past, which you're aware of, where we had a town employee that was accused of something, that they went to administrative staff and were kind of put off. It wasn't until they came to Chuck and myself and shared that situation with us that we opened Pandora's box and found a much deeper issue.
So, I think that goes both ways, right? So, there's in this, that whether town employees can come to the select board members, but it's also whether the select board members go to town employees.
Right, right.
So, it needs to be a, both policies kinda need to-
Right. I just, I guess my point, and I totally, and we touched on it at the retreat, you know, Chuck calls an employee, Matthew calls an employee, Gary calls an employee, Anthony calls an employee, right? We all call for different reasons, now the employee's like, "What am I supposed to do?" Trying to get away from that, but as far as, I just don't wanna ever have an employee feel like they can't contact the select board about something, that's all.
Absolutely include that. Okay, so I found a draft code of conduct, which I will hand out to you, because I never know what's deliberative of the email.
For select board-
What's that? Yeah, select board code of conduct. And again, like, you don't have to read this now, we can review it at a future meeting, but I thought it would be a good start. Anthony, do you wanna copy?
When you say "found it"?
I, it was on, it was like, I looked at, like, ten different towns, and they all had the same language.
I think it's out of the states.
Yeah, it could be.
Is it in the new employee handbook, though?
It's from the MSA.
Yeah, it's the, yeah. I did see a code of conduct, that's-
I thought we updated that when we updated the employee policies and procedures through the whole recent exercise.
Except that when we discussed at the retreat about this, I think that one thing Jeffrey said was, like, we'll make it more front and center, so I guess I was hoping to have a more formal or strong language in it.
I mean, this is a great document for members to know what's expected, but at the end of the day, there's the teeth of somebody just wants to go off the rails and violate, right? But I think we're, this is a great document if we actually enforce it as a board, to some degree.
And then, for policy and bylaw review, you know, we've been talking about doing that since I started, and I guess what I realized as I was going through this was, I don't think that this board is the right people to review the policies of the town. I don't think that we're the experts in it. I'm not sure that it's, you know, I think that we need to find someone who's a professional at reviewing policies and bylaws to give us a comprehensive review.
Right, but to what end, though? What are you looking for?
Well, so, I mean, so the original intent, I understand, was to make sure that they, rationalize them and make sure that they're consistent, not only with state law, but consistent with each other, consistent with the policies that we've written.
Right, so-
Off change, so.
No, and so, when Anthony was actually the assistant town administrator, it was a brilliant idea, he, we sent them out to the town employees, and I think we touched upon it during the retreat, when I reminded Matt Pennard, that, hey, you, he made a bunch of comments, he knew off the bat what was outdated, Steve Anoudi did, too, and all their comments are in red line. We don't need to hire somebody to give us that feedback, we already have a lot of it.
Okay.
Personally, and I'm sorry-
No, go ahead.
And I'm not dismissing the idea at all, but I would like us to complete the process that we started. We had brought in an intern to go through them. We've made a lot of leeway, we just haven't brought it all together. You know, I'm just gonna pick on, you know, Chief Pennard for a second. You know, if he goes through those bylaws and reads his notes, there's a lot of them that are just gonna go away. We don't need to pay somebody that's gonna, to take a look at those, and we already know the answer. Do you know what I mean?
If you think that, so, are you gonna do the, I mean, who's gonna take all of those comments, make sure that everyone is right?
If I may, when I was on school committee, Darryl Baker, we had goals as well, and we had champions, and Darryl Baker was, it was a subcommittee, it was usually two of us, but Darryl Baker carried the water, 'cause I was on the policy committee for a while, and I went to a bunch of meetings, and he didn't meet me, frankly. He had a process, and he had a very deliberative way of checking our policies against the mass school committees association policies and mass general law, and he spent a couple of hours every Sunday going over however many policies he could go through. It is something that one of us would have to champion, one of us would have to own it and take a look like that. I agree, I don't think we need to hire anybody, I think a lot of the work's been done by our staff. I'd actually say that we can push that back on department heads, but I also think when it comes to org chart, Steve was a great resource, but there's others, every single department head kinda knows their structure, so I think we need to include-
That's good. I'm gonna, you know-
Right, and that was one, like, I think I said it during the retreat, one of my main goals this year is to straighten out the policies and spearhead that whole initiative.
It's not sexy, it's not, it's not fun, Darryl was just wired a certain way, and he was great at it.
We tried to do that for the library in the past year, and it's-
It's very hard.
I mean, I just-
Really hard to make them go through and make them all consistent and go through them all.
Right, it's not easy.
Well, I mean, so I guess, here's what I'm saying, do you wanna do it? Because I wanna have somebody take the lead on it.
Honestly, Matthew, that's like one of the only things I wanna do this year.
Okay, I'm gonna put you on it, then.
I mean, no, I've got, I have another idea that I'll talk to you guys-
This paper doesn't say-
No, that I'll talk to you guys about, but, no, that's really a main, one of my main goals.
Okay.
And at least get as far as we can with it.
It's something that you've done a fair amount of work, you're the one that spearheaded bringing in Jess.
We brought in Jessica.
Yeah.
She actually just passed the bar.
Yeah, that's great.
Wow.
Yeah, so-
Actually, maybe, Anthony, let's send her a note on our behalf.
Oh, we should do that, yeah, she's great.
So, I just have a question, then, should you be the champion of this whole goal, or should Matthew still be?
Oh, I, well, I can-
The captain.
I can add Cindy, make Cindy the captain, and I can just do the code of conduct.
Yeah.
Completely fine.
You can be like third-line center.
Yeah, yeah, utility infielder. Okay, communications, move on to that. So, Mark, you know, make the website interactive was, I think, you put, and I just, my comment is like, it's not, that's not specific enough. And so, happy to discuss in more detail, same for more updates to the residents, like, yes, but how? And if you wanna take the lead on investigating, the best ways to do that, I think that's a great goal.
Okay.
But, I mean, is that something you're interested in?
Yeah.
And Nancy Glenn Ross actually had some great suggestions during our department head meeting about changes she was planning to make to the website. I suggest anybody that champions that goal is to definitely work with her on that, because she had some specific examples that I think would be helpful.
Maybe something we should do, Anthony, is, it sounded like at the department head meeting, the training was made available to people, and some people took advantage of it and some people didn't. Maybe if it's part of the job description, and they're held accountable, it's part of their performance evaluation.
For updating their-
Updating their, their part of the website. I mean, they're, you own this, this is your department. Let the public know what's going on in X, Y, Z department.
It will be, Chuck.
IT's a reality, yeah.
I think accountability is all we need to do, is add that as part of the job description, and they're evaluated on it, and what's measured and evaluated tends to get, tends to get done.
You must have been looking over my shoulders, already included.
You've got a mirror behind you.
Do we wanna add that to this document as a goal? Like, I'm not sure, I don't know if that's a select board goal, or if Anthony-
I think it ties into this particular goal, as far as communication, as far as the website.
I doubt, you know, that's probably a great goal for Anthony, is to integrate that into each department job description, work with Michelle on that, or however you do that.
It's not necessarily job-
It's in the performance status.
In the performance standards, hit forth for-
One of the objectives.
One of their objectives.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, okay, great. And then, improve communication plan and mechanism with residents, again, a little bit general. I don't know, did you put that one in, Chuck?
What was it?
Improve communication plans and mechanisms with residents.
I'll take that, too.
Oh, you want to?
Just, honestly, Anthony, I would actually put "as needed" almost, because that, right, you can either say twice a year, you have to make that measurable, right?
Yeah.
Talking, it's either, you know what I mean, once a year, twice a year, or as needed, that's the accountability piece.
Right.
Anyway, sorry.
You're gonna be the captain of this one, Mark, 'cause you're already signed up. Develop an education introduction for new residents about our form of government, and this was, Cindy, this is something that you had suggested?
Right, and Anthony had the awesome suggestion, and he's actually mentioned this in the past, about the-
Citizen.
Citizen Academy.
Yeah.
There's something going on on this today, so there's a group of people getting together to figure this out on their own, so.
Really?
Really.
To figure out the Citizen Academy on their own?
No, to figure out how to get residents and more information when they move to town.
Are they gonna share that with us?
I hope so.
This group?
I won't.
I'm gonna put your name on this, and you're gonna have you, have you reach out to them?
Okay.
It's like the welcome wagon.
Yeah, there's, there used to be a packet, like, when we moved to town, you got, you know, how to get a library card and what all the services were.
Beach permit.
They're looking to revive something like that.
I actually have a story. So, my mother's in a book club, and she's still in the book club with the original group of women that she joined the book club with, and I asked her, I go, "How did you get involved with that club?" When we moved, when she moved to Littleton, back in, I think I was three years old, there was a welcome wagon, and that's how she met all those, all this, this group of women, and they started a book club, and they've been doing it ever since, so it used to really, it was a thing. It'd be wonderful if you could revive that.
How many years ago was that?
You could do a once-a-year, you know, we do Thursdays, I mean, you could do, actually, a once-a-year in the fall, new resident barbecue or celebration at Fay Park or wherever, just to kinda, with those, meet the town department heads, and how to get a beach permit, and how to do all these, get a packet, I mean, all these things.
How to be part of Littleton.
Well, right, which is a great idea. So, that's one thing, if there's a group coming together for that, but I think the Citizens Academy is another great idea. I have no idea what that would look like, but I know, Anthony, that you had mentioned that, I think that would be great.
Yeah, so, what is the, what's the action item on that? Do we have to create it? Do we have to opt into it? Like, yeah, I mean-
Hire staff first.
Yeah, have you been in a town where you've seen it? I mean-
Oh, yeah, we did it, did it in Wyndham, yeah. So, it's just, it's-
Recreating the wheel, though.
It's actually pretty cool. It's like fourteen weeks, twelve weeks.
Wow. Can we do it virtual? Or do we have to-
Well, it was, it was, you could probably do some parts of it virtual, but it was neat, because like, when they went to the fire department, the fire department had to let them try on bunker gear and see the hoses and kinda set it up and show them what they have to do, and ran them through some stuff.
Can they go up in the boom?
I don't know, but-
Well, so, okay, so-
Boom. We have to get a couple of waving, signatures of waivers if they're right.
So, how would, would you have to spend a lot of time and effort to get that organized? Is there someone we can hire to do it?
Cooperated it.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna add more to you.
So-
Call and center, was it in May?
No, 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 it was, it was my Director of Administrative Services, which was like the assistant town administrator in Wyndham. In Lexington, they had a fellow, masses, in the masses program, a fellow that ran it, he's actually Rajan, who's the assistant in box borrow right now, so he ran it. Just really coordinating and getting the department heads on board. It was something that I probably would look towards, the assistant.
So, twelve to fourteen weeks, I'm just thinking of practically, in my family, I don't, I can't imagine.
I don't know if it's that long, Chuck. No, I don't know if it's that long, it might have only been eight weeks, I'm trying to think. That was probably too long, it's probably eight weeks.
I think we go to the whole creep, crawl, walk, run thing, let's start creeping and crawling, and see if we can do a couple of nights at the police station, the fire station, and the library, just, welcome to Littleton.
Did you know?
Ask any question, yeah, did you know? Any question you have, bring it, bring it to this forum. Maybe we start out with that, and then we evolve into, and that helps you build up your staff and-
Yeah.
Then the advanced stuff can be like our form of government, 'cause if you move anywhere here, from not the East Coast, you have no-
They have no idea.
No idea what our form of government is.
Would it be like, is it like every Saturday, or?
No, no, they normally pick a night, like a Wednesday night, and they came, and it was usually, I don't know, hour, hour and a half.
How well-attended was it?
Normally, they probably got about, depending on the community, Wyndham was small, but we probably got about twelve to fifteen.
Okay, that's good.
Lexington would get-
More.
More.
But that, those would be the people who would eventually end up getting involved, right?
Yeah, you know what it was, it was, we actually recruited a lot of people to get boards and committees, because once, you know, we told them about all the form of government, right? And every department kinda ran through, had a PowerPoint, president talked to them, what do we do, how do we do it?
I think we've all been to a college tour with a kid, and you have that arena day where all the clubs and-
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, it's like, organizations are out there saying-
That's why I mentioned-
Join our group, join our day.
Yeah, it's like an open house, it's like they do with the tech.
So, would this be something that you would wait until you had an ATA to start organizing? Which, and I'm fine putting this off, and like, it's a great idea, but we can't do everything on this list.
Yeah, it's, normally you run it, like, right in September, and it gets over before, like-
The holidays.
The holidays, yeah.
So, after school.
Because then it gets a little cold when you go outside and so forth, but, yeah, we can, we can try to shoot far in September, if not, maybe it's something that we shoot for the spring.
I was gonna suggest it would be a good thing to do in April, when you're getting ready to reappoint people to boards.
Well, but, we're kinda busy, yeah, we're kinda busy during that period of time.
So, what do you guys think about doing an open house?
For-
I was just thinking about the tech, like, Joe, my son, wanted to go to the tech. Went to an open house at the tech.
Take a day, kinda shut down for-
Well, it was a night thing, so we went there, and we went to each shop.
Plumbing, you go to electrical, you go to graphics.
You go to each shop, and you just walked, and you just went in to whatever random shop you wanted to go in, and there was, people go in the TA's office, there's Anthony, he would just tie in, "Nice to meet you."
We could actually, hopefully, the hours comes before the board, what I wanna try to coordinate, and maybe that could be something, if we start, say, in July with the new hours, that the first Monday that we do it, at the late night, that that could just be-
The late night.
Hey, the late night, this is our new hours, come on in, stop by, and-
And they just, and everybody's there, like, they would come to 103, we'd all be here, And they just, and everybody's there. Like they would come to 103, we'd all be here and they could just, just meet people. Tell them what we, and it doesn't, it's quick and it's kind of just like an in and out. They can leave when they want to leave and maybe start with that, something like that. And then get into the citizens academy piece of it.
Yep.
I think it needs to be more than town hall though, cause you need to.
A police fire DPW.
Well, you could have them here.
They could be here.
Yeah. I don't think their people are going to drive around, right?
No, yeah. They could definitely, they could be in the multipurpose room or they could be somewhere.
That would be actually, that would be kind of, kind of nice if we had to fire a cruiser and, you know, jack and all that stuff. Okay. Um, let's move on. So I had the idea based on the department heads of like communication professional. It feels like there were several things that were mentioned. I think that communication with residents is something that people said over and over. What the website is another one. It strikes me that there, somebody would be so psyched to work remotely, even if it was halftime as a communications manager for the town. So, you know, social media stuff. Well, I don't know. We have, we have, we have a PR firm, but I don't know how we pay them. Is it, you know, is it, are they on retainer? Is it, is it every time we do something with them, we pay?
It's budgeted.
But they're not doing sort of community engagement stuff, right?
It's reactive.
Yeah.
Intern type stuff?
Um, well, I always think, no, I think we need a, I think we need a professional and I don't think that it would be, it would break the bank. And I think it could be someone who could work remotely, honestly.
Great part-time job.
Yeah. We could find someone who was willing to do it and, and we could even try them out for a quarter or something and see whether it's worth it. Um, this is not a well baked idea. Like it's just the first thing, but I, you know, we could, we could investigate it if people think.
I think that's the idea is we, we do investigate it. We, we take a look at, our next ATA may have just some.
There you go.
Killer skills in communication and, you know, where they're tweeting stuff out all the time and they're, they're updating the website and.
Right.
Who knows? We just don't know who the players are going to be at this point. Or frankly, Anthony's administrative assistant, our administrative assistant.
Yeah.
So I, okay. I appreciate you saying that it's not fully baked, but I think that we can investigate it, find out what other communities are doing. Cause I'm sure there are some communities, larger communities for sure, that have some, somebody who owns this.
Right. You also have to decide what the scope of this is. I mean, does it go to the school department too?
They do a good job with their side. Police does a good job with their, they have their own who's maintaining all that stuff.
I don't know who posts for the.
Like I see, I know when there's a fire, I know when there's an engine downtown. It comes up on all the social media.
It gets much deeper than that. Like as far as like town projects and things, I'm just going to use 550 King Street for an example. Like Anthony Houston was saying, we need to move that project to the homepage of the website. So people know where to get going on things like that. But then it's other smaller things too. It is with regard to the, um.
Like Glamorous Jane today even.
Like the Glamorous Jane opening. I actually had drafted a newsletter when I first got on the board. We posted it one time. It was a lot of work.
A newsletter. That's a great example.
Yeah. And it was really cool and all the board members approved it and we sent it out. I don't know how we sent it out. But it was just basically talking about every, not just town related things. It was more, it was more like a social kind of calendar. I mean.
It was, it was an engagement tool. It was good.
It was an engagement tool. I forget what else was going on at the time, but it wasn't just strictly boring town stuff. It was interesting things about different groups.
Going back to our meeting last week with department heads, um, I know Alicia mentioned it and Sean mentioned, I think Anthony brought it up. And a couple of this, as far as us going to Open Gov or Clear Gov. Open Gov?
Open Gov, yes.
I haven't seen all their modules, but I know Clear Gov has stuff where you can put projects on there and there can be updates on it and what votes are coming up. And so people can go and find out what's going on with the senior center, what's going on with 550 King Street, what's going on with the sewer project. You know, so all that information is on there and depending upon which one of those systems we were, are engaged with, you can see, okay, we voted in May of whatever to change this and fund this. And this is where the funding is going and we're broken ground here. So it's, it's that kind of openness and transparency is, I think is important. And I, Anthony, I think, I know Clear Gov does it, but I think Open Gov does it as well, right? I know they use, they're, they're more on the administrative ERP, day-to-day municipal governing side. But I do believe they have some component.
Yeah. We asked, um, Alicia and I were talking about this. We're going to ask, we're going to do a demo with them again, just to see how deep that they do get into it. Both of them and Clear Gov too. And, um, taking another.
Cause they close like every week.
So, uh, so I, I want to, I want to, so does someone want, I, I will take this one and do, and do research. I think there's some work to be done to sort of assemble all the needs and possible sources of information and, and synthesize some kind of plan. Um, and I will do that unless someone else feels that like they really want to, want to swipe at it.
So are we on develop, educate, introduction for new residents?
Um, no, we're on the, uh, well, the original plan here was create a staffing position for communications professional. And then I put underneath that, what are other communities doing? What's the scope? Like, does it include other town departments? How does it interact with Open Gov? So does anybody feel like they desperately want to have this?
I don't desperately want to have it, but I will help out.
Okay.
Is Anthony going to take the previous one?
Um, well, so that one I just had as ATA, like Assistant Town Administrator question mark.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Because I don't know when we will be able to really do that.
Like the, okay, gotcha.
So can I suggest we just leave it as Anthony and then he can delegate?
Sure. But I, yes, but I don't want to, I don't want to make it a, I don't want to make it a done deal, right?
We don't have a due date for it.
Well, we don't have due date yet for anything. So, um, and then the last one is that, that department meeting was great. Like that was really valuable. I want to do that twice a year. Do you think that's, that's okay, Anthony?
Sure. I'll put the same thing down. I'll put the same thing in mind. And I think that, I think that's important that we do it now to identify the goals before we do our goals and then we check in in six months and say, where are you at? How have we done?
Right. And we can incorporate that into the calendar that Matthew's going to work on.
Perfect. Um, short-term staffing needs, compensation grid. I just put Gary as the owner because you're, you're the default.
Yeah. I think part of that too, um, is the, some of the benefit side too, and not to interfere with HR, but there was, I had conversation about, um, these, being able to recognize employees, some type of a recognition program where it, whether there is a pot of money put aside at the beginning of, of the year. That there's a significant, um, event that an employee helps with, you know, modernization, something or could be police fire, someone does something outstanding where an on-the-spot cash award for whatever amount can be given. And I don't know how far crazy that is with municipalities, but we're not talking about a ton of money here. But, you know, if it's a hundred dollars here, a hundred dollars there for rec, just recognizing something.
An Amazon gift card or something like that.
Yeah. I just don't know if there's anything available like that, that we're, we're authorized to create.
Did that for Park and Rec, right? For going above and beyond for Tim.
Well, that wasn't going above and beyond. It was taking on another duty.
Right. So that, so that, that kind of reminded me just when someone comes up with a great idea on our website and they got a, a new way to streamline a process. I mean, you know, some of that work, it would be nice to be able to, for a manager, and maybe it could be even if there were a lot of these things going on, the, the, when you, at your department head meetings, you guys would be the screening, just decide who gets something. If it's quarterly or whatever. I don't know. I was just trying to see.
Does it have to involve money?
I'm just trying to think how else you could reckon. You'd have to, you could do, I mean, you guys already kind of recognize employees. Employee recognition is really where I'm.
So, so let's, let's, okay. Yeah. I don't want to get too much.
No, but so I, I get the grid. Grid's most important. I agree.
Okay. So when, when is it going to be done and who's, I mean, can I?
This, this has to be done this year.
And you're, are, can I make you like just the, the person who owns the communication with the rest of the board on that?
Yes.
Because that's been active since I started.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Nine years ago? That's terrifying.
Yeah. I mean, we've done it randomly. Like we made Amy Green a certificate when she had gotten us that grant for the brown property. We made her certificate from the select board and framed it. We, you know, we gave her some recognition, but just.
No formalized like.
But there's no formalized process.
So my professional career, we have something that's literally built into our outlook where we can recognize an employee who's going above and beyond and there's, there's merit and everybody gets, you know, points and.
Yeah. There's, we have that at our, at my office too.
There's ways to do, to do that and you can cash in the points for rewards and that kind of thing. I don't think we're at that point in this organization, but I love the idea of being able to empower our department heads or anyone really.
Really, it's all employees, what I was.
Yeah. To, to say, I really appreciate so-and-so and, um.
Yeah. For going above and beyond.
And sometimes they talk with creative ideas that actually save the town money. Things like that are huge.
Right. So, so yeah, does someone want to own that and like try to come up with a plan? Or do we want to just put this on a back burner?
Yeah. I don't know how much on the front burner it should be, but I can, I can.
Want to take that one Chuck? Sure. Just, okay. Um, and then the last one is, um.
Just employee recognition.
I'll send this out. It says, employee recognition program empower department heads to reward, reward an employee for going above. Um, staffing, staffing requests from department heads, things that came out of our department head meeting, which I think were common. Um, shared business manager was something I heard. Um, the communication professional I mentioned. The grant writer could be full remote and a facilities director. So I just, I, I had ascribed this to Anthony as his domain is trying to figure out with Alicia and the department heads, what is in the best interest of the town.
And, and HR in there as well with the schools, because I know that that's something Anthony and Michelle have been working on with.
Oh, HR, HR assistant with schools?
Yeah. So we, we approved, I think 19 hours for HR and I think that we could justify a full-time position there potentially and by them going out, you know, trying to help get support. And actually Jeff and I even said something about sharing those resources with the school department. He's in Franklin. I mean, it's a lot, a lot bigger, um, government and a lot bigger community, but.
So, so Anthony, is this something that you're going to do anyway? I mean, in other words, is this already on your list of things that you're looking at?
Well, yeah. Some of this stuff would be involved in the budget process anyways and there'll be, there'll be expansion requests from departments. So, um.
Yeah. So are we talking about these things for like coming for funding for fall town meeting? Are we talking? I'm just asking what our due date is.
I think there, obviously as a facilities director, there's definitely conversation in this building about really, really needing.
Right. So I'm, so this is like, if we're throwing a date and we're expecting some answer on what these are in September, October.
Before we go to the next town meeting?
And then we'll decide, you know, which ones to fund when, right?
Makes a lot of sense. Um, long-range fiscal plan. Mark, develop a three to five-year hiring or operational plan.
I think that kind of goes with what some of the stuff we were just talking about partially too, right? We just went through the department head meetings and everyone said, we need all these, all these people, but we don't really have a plan on how we were funding or hiring or when, right? So.
So how do we, I mean, how do we create that plan? Who creates it? Do we even know?
I mean, it.
Because I don't.
It has to rest in the manager's hands, which it currently does to understand that they.
The needs of their department.
Right. That's part of the process. The other side.
Budget process.
Definitely is. Um, but also you recognize.
Again, this isn't something that is traditionally done in municipal government. So I know that there's things that happen in the private sector. Uh, this would be really low priority, in my opinion.
Yeah. Okay.
I said that the other night and I'll continue to say.
I, I hear you. Um, just, I mean, I, yeah. Okay. Um, capital projects priority pipeline. Was that you, Mark, that wrote that one?
We already have that.
Yeah?
Yeah, we have that.
I'm not sure. So I just, I put it in. I don't remember who wrote it, but, um, accurate, an accurate budget calendar. This came out of the fact, I think Cindy mentioned that we have three different budget calendars that don't match.
Right. So as far as, according to our financial policies, there's a process that we need to go through with FinCom, with our finance, TA, FinCom, this board and our finance group.
Okay.
To revise that budget calendar. We're supposed to review it. How did it work? What could be better? Blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
But there are three different versions. So we need to come up with one version, but that's more along the lines of a joint meeting.
Do you think July or August?
To have that discussion. Well, we're supposed to do it after, at the end of the, the budget cycle. So we're kind of probably past due on that. We should probably do it before we enter into the new budget cycle.
So meeting, so FinCom, the, the treasurer and.
Anthony and this board. Yeah. So we're supposed to have a meeting to talk about that, according to our financial policies.
Okay. I'm going to put that on Anthony just to schedule the meeting.
Okay.
I mean, the skeleton of it.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I'm sure it is. I just think, I just want to make sure that we have it.
It shouldn't take a lot of work. Right.
Um, calendar process. So we, we actually talked about this already. Calendar process for monitoring HCA requirements. And then create a policy for collecting fees and delinquent taxes. Do we have? You know, like I looked at the, at the state website and there was someone who owed us, you know, a hundred and $60,000 or something, some business that owed us that much money. Do we have a policy and a, and a process for collecting those? I've never even, I've never even asked and I was, you know.
I'm sure we must have something.
Well, I mean, the fine part, well, the treasurer's responsible to set up a plan.
I don't think that falls under.
That's, that's in our lane.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just was asking like, cause I didn't know.
They definitely have a mechanism that they need to follow for that process.
Uh, it ends up falling back on the tax aisle, right?
Well, before you delete both of those, do the HCA's, do we actually have, know what they all are? Are they all documented somewhere that people can find and we can?
On the website. Under select board, HCA's.
Right. But my point, and I'm, I'm the one that raised that question is, are we getting the money from our HCA's? Like who's monitoring that? Can we get an accounting of our HCA's?
I don't know if anyone's looking at them. Would that be, again, would that be the treasurer?
It's a host community agreement with this board.
Yeah.
So what is our oversight? Are we, you know, doing our due diligence?
That's a good one. Okay. So I would assume that the treasurer would try to collect it. But we don't know if they're, but we don't know if it's on their radar to look through those agreements and see if they're, they're, they're updated.
Right. So I think that's something that we should at least, maybe part of our calendar, Matthew. Or just make sure, or at least have a trigger that we should get a copy of those reportings. It's.
I mean, for a while there, we were getting, Sanctuary came in here a number of times and took a picture of the big check.
Yeah.
So that's something we can certainly, I mean, with COVID, we got away from that and we can restart that, that, um, that habit.
Inviting them in.
That cadence.
Maybe, um, as we revive the calendar, I can look through the HCA's on the site and make sure that those are in the calendar. How about that?
Yeah.
That I can do.
But as far as other things that the HCA states that, you know, engage, whether the education or, there are other things that are not monetary that, I don't know who would.
Those can, those can be in the calendar too. And I think that's on the board and that's probably on us to, to, to confirm whether or not those things have been completed and then ask, you know, if they haven't.
Or.
It could be like an HCA update, annual HCA update or something. Yeah.
With the HCA, they should do a report back, right? And say what they've done.
Right.
Yeah. That's, yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah. Each person that we're engaged in each.
And reporting. Okay. Um, I'll try, I'm, I'm, I'll add to the calendar. Um, develop a long-term funding plan to build sidewalks throughout the town prioritizing Shaker Lane.
We already do have that.
Yeah. Where is it? Do you know?
Yes. With the highway department. It's our complete streets.
Oh, complete streets. Okay.
Yeah. There is a whole comprehensive plan that Chris started, put together.
Yeah. We don't get to pick and choose where they, where the first sidewalks go in.
Right.
Um, why is that?
Because there's a state standard and.
Oh, really?
And it depends on funding, but yeah, we've got that, we have that whole plan.
And is that on the website or is it available there? Okay. Um, this is something Amy brought up. Increase CPC funding to address the growing conservation and open space needs. So.
Actually, I'm just going to push it back to the sidewalk thing again.
Oh, sir.
We can, we can certainly put more funding in there. If we'd say, we want to have a quarter of a mile sidewalk every year, minimum.
We can like allocate that in the budget.
We can, we can create that.
Right.
There is a plan.
Um, CPC.
I'm okay with.
Okay. That's good. Um, CPC funding to address, uh, sorry, CPC, increase the, the CPC funding. I think it was, the suggestion was go from one to 3%.
This was definitely one of mine. I was sending it to somebody else's too.
I love this idea personally.
Yeah. What do we need to do?
But I think we're required to spread it out equally throughout all the buckets. I don't think we can.
We don't define the, they do.
The CPC does. I, I think we can increase the allocation.
Yeah. And then they decide the bucket percentage.
The percentages, the percentages are all established by the state, I think, right?
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, we can increase this, but I don't think that we can say, okay, we're going to increase this, but all that money is going to open space and conservation. It's got to be spread out evenly. I think it's a great idea.
Who would do that? Would we need a, do we need, is it bylaw?
I think it's a bylaw change, right, Anthony?
I think it's worth having a conversation, letting the public know instead of just arbitrarily.
So. Yeah. You're raising their taxes. So there's a, there's a process.
You're not necessarily raising their taxes.
We're just taking more out of their taxes.
So you have a financial policy that states exactly where our money goes, right?
Percentage on their taxes.
Well, it doesn't.
Oh, right. You're right.
So it, that changes our financial policy. Cause you know, when we're doing the, I know when FinCom does this, we have money's going to capital operational and then the CPC, that, that's written right in there as well. So.
Yeah. There's a whole section on the CPC and the financial policies.
So currently we're at 1% and I don't know other community, I mean, I'd love to see what other communities that are really rich and open space, what they're doing. Are they 1% and are they relying on donations? What are they, how are they?
It depends. Some of the.
It helps slow growth too. And that's something else that can be pitched. I mean, if you're really trying to talk about slowing growth a little bit in town as far as residential growth especially. When a farm pops up for sale, it's nice to have a buck, that bucket of money there. So we don't have to sit here and go to town meeting for an override or whatever to, to purchase open space. It's already there. But I also know that the tax, you know, Sean's office won't like this idea at all because it does directly take money, you know, from them.
Well, we, yeah. We're increasing that, we're increasing instead of, to Anthony's point, I stand corrected.
Add, you, you. Right. But people are more inclined, I, I, I think in the pulse of this town, if you, if they know where that money is going into open space and how we're doing it, or how, not just open space, but CPC in general. And what, what those buckets do for the town and how that, the big picture. I think people are more inclined to.
This requires review with a, of a financial policy.
So who would, who would, who, who, would someone like to take the lead on, on this?
I'll take the lead.
Okay. On, on investigating this?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause it sounds like there's a lot of things to look into.
There's a lot of benefits to it, but there's certainly a process we need to follow.
One to 3% is a huge jump. I mean, you could go one to one and a half.
Yeah, sure.
There definitely needs to be one to three.
All right. Um, senior tax relief, revamp the work-off program based on the EHS department goals, which is something that Liz mentioned at the, Liz is already working on, I understand. Um, work with Jim R. Ciero on legislation. And find a balance between, that was Chuck, find a balance between senior tax relief and a stable tax rate. I'm not sure what that third one, like if, is there a, is there an action item or a measurable thing there?
These are my goals too. I had, definitely had these in my goals.
Yeah. So we've discussed it. So it's, um, Sudbury has a plan. Westford just passed, um, the special act, Anthony, is that what Westford passed to, to change their, their tax to, um, one, one proposal that has been discussed and Mr. Barbella from the Board of Assessors has put a ton of effort into it and Paul and I have met with him quite a bit. Um, he's, he's actively trying to get Representative R. Ciero to bring some, bring a bill forward. It, it needs some tweaking, but just on a very high level, one of the proposals would be if you've been in your house for X number of years and.
Paying taxes.
You're paying your taxes, you're paying them on time. You would, once you reach, I'm going to use 70 years old. It's not, you know, this is not. This is not a proposal. Once you reach, reach 70 years old, whatever your home is assessed at, when you, when you are approved, it goes through an approval process, it stays at that assessed value unless and until you sell your home. And it's not selling you to a trust, to your family. There's, there's a whole lot of moving parts that have to be addressed and, and ironed out. But something like that, that gives relief. Now that burden, if someone had a home that was assessed at 400,000, it goes up to 500,000, that hundred thousand dollars in assessed value has to be spread out amongst everybody else, times however many homes, however many qualifying applicants we have. So that's what I'm talking about is finding that delicate balance on, on the rest of the taxpayers that have to bear the burden.
So is this a state? This would have to be a state, this is a state thing that R. Ciero is proposing?
We would have to, it would have to be legislative.
Okay. Oh, for just for Littleton though?
Yes.
That's specific, um, that there's already, you just mentioned Sudbury, the Sudbury means test is, is one that already exists.
Standard, yeah.
And that's our, the homework's been done. The legality's been, already been cleared.
Okay.
And that's one that, um, just another program that we could actually look into that much, little different than.
Yeah. We've got the dual tax rate, which muddies things a little bit.
That problem, it's a huge problem.
Right. Yeah.
So, so, yeah. So how do we, how do we move forward on this goal? Like.
I'll continue to, I mean, I have put a lot of time, Gary wants to jump in because like I said, he needs the separately. I'll continue that. I mean, I have put a lot of time, Gary wants to jump in, because like I said, he separately has done some legwork on this, so maybe the co-champion or something like that.
But this isn't like.
It's a big project.
This isn't like there's a, there's a specific deliverable, this is just like an ongoing pushing the elephant.
I would love for us to have some sort of draft legislation by year's end, by calendar year end.
I mean, in the work-off program, we're literally jumping right in both feet.
That's happening.
We're doing it, we are doing it right now, so.
To the max, for the max to stay well.
We have to vote, but we're gonna see it coming.
Better understand the impact of developments on the town and how they will affect future needs. I just, I didn't, that wasn't as specific enough for me to understand.
So I kinda put that down, but we talked, like, if we just take, like, 550 King Street, people say that it's going to bring in all these extra tax revenues, but we haven't actually, to my knowledge, I haven't seen a projection on what that is, and we haven't actually said how much it's going to cost in extra services and things we have to provide. So when we actually go through these kind of projects, we should actually have a better financial model behind them. And I don't know how to go about defining that and do that.
Based on other projects we know we've done in Littleton, we should have a rough.
Well, we haven't done a project like.
On that scope, what I'm saying, when you move, when we move in a developed neighborhood, what did that just do to?
Well, we could also, we could also probably take a look at what, what impact 15 Great Road had, and there's X number of units there, and you can kinda multiply, you know, extrapolate and try to figure out. For the residential portion, we can expect approximately this impact to our revenue side. And because there are, I'm gonna just throw in about three hundred residents at 15 Great Road, it increased our call volumes by this and this, and this is.
And our school load by this and all of that stuff.
We can do that.
We can.
To some degree, it's not an exact science.
There's a lot of moving parts, though. You got Police, Fire, you've got the Assessors Office, Treasurer's.
Four miles to plow.
So, so who does it? That's, I guess that's the question, like, who's in charge of assembling the information and gathering it and reporting it?
I think at the highest level, it's Kathy, I think it's the assessor. But that's not fair to her, but that's, that's as far as what potential revenue we can expect.
If everything was built out in that facility as we think the plan looks like, what does that equate?
Yeah, but that's, that's just tax revenue, that has nothing to do with services, impact on services, impact on water, impact on schools.
That's what I mean, at the highest level, just to figure out what the income could potentially be based upon the plans that we've got before us, which, to Cindy's point, she's provided us, this is what IBM was giving us at, you know, in the heyday, and this is what it is now, this is what we can expect, so she, she's able to do that at a high level. But we're not gonna get what the, you know, the.
But Police know, he knew.
Both sides of the balance.
The stationary area, right?
We did it through the stationary process, so honestly, what I think we do is, we email the superintendent, we email the schools, we email Fire, we email Police, we email Highway. Hey, 550 King Street's coming in, if they build it out to the max, what impact is this gonna have in your department? They'll give us that information.
So, are you saying that we need a process for every development, or are you just talking about, in this case, let's just deal with 550 King Street now and then, you know, try to do it in the future?
I think if we had a process for 550, we could replicate it elsewhere, but I don't know that we have the process, or if it is, if we do have it, I don't know what it is. Right, so we either, and I don't know that anyone really does.
I don't think there is really a process.
Police rely, he relies on a population, certain amount of population, you're gonna have this many calls, it's, it's pretty close to.
But with the stationary area, we asked him, what did 15 Great Road do, and he was like, it didn't do anything. Like, all the calls are coming from, I don't wanna pick on anybody, all the calls are coming from Ponceide, right? I mean, so.
You can say the same about schools to some degree.
Yeah.
Yeah, schools, they, I think we put the onus on them to give us that information and just.
On the developer.
Or.
Or the school department.
On this, we just sent out, we can just send out an email, hey, Select Board is interested in this information, give it back for us.
To whichever stakeholder, yeah.
To whichever stake. We can certainly do with 550 King Street, I think if you have a smaller development coming in, it's might be.
I mean, we have that to some degree with St. Jamie Homes, but, sorry.
But I also think, like, 550 King Street is different than, like, the Derby property development, right?
Oh, sure, sure.
Because just the density and their mixed juice and everything else, there's a lot of, I don't know, we've ever done something like 550, even in any stretch, so we don't really know what any of the impacts are.
Yeah, so it might be like a one-time thing, Mark?
Yeah.
But we can certainly come up with a model, like a process.
So are you volunteering to collect all that information, Mark?
Sure.
Now, you know, were you surprised, I mean, I was surprised when I asked the holy companies, when we went up for our visit, of all those units that he put in.
Twenty kids.
I had asked, how many children, what did this add to the school system? And it was twenty.
It was like three hundred, three hundred and forty units and twenty school-aged children.
Yeah, and it was based on.
Yeah.
But he's got one and two bedroom units there, Planning Board's talking about having ten percent, three bedroom units.
So then, this is something we'll have to look at.
That's a big game changer.
That's what we need to look at, 15 Great Road, that's what we need to look at Avalon, and again, going back to my days of school committee, when 15 Great Road was coming in, I did a lot of research with the Superintendent's Office and ACT, and to say, what was the impact of Avalon? And we anticipated we were gonna get eighty-two students in the Littleton schools based upon what was being built at 15 Great Road.
I remember Mike Farnum had all that information. He's got a great chart.
He moved today, so.
Let's, okay, let's keep, let's keep going. Mark's got it. Then this is from Chuck, continue to review and adjust financial policies, OPEB.
Just, again, continue to pivot and make changes where we need to make it. If it makes sense to put more money towards OPEB, let's do it. If it makes sense right now, because we can use that funding, because we fund OPEB probably better than any other municipality.
We're probably the top, top five towns in the state.
Not five percent, five towns out of three fifty-one.
So is there an, I mean, is there an action item on the board here?
I mean, I think it's, it's, it's really not a goal for us. We should be reviewing financial policies, I think you brought it up at the retreat, annually.
Yeah, we're supposed to be doing it anyways, as part of our annual, so we can throw that in.
Into the calendar.
Right, but it's a huge, it's a huge undertaking.
But I think we need to put everything on the table, like, OPEB, we've just, I mean, Steve, God bless him, he's done a fantastic job of putting us in a good financial place. And as have a number of people, Mr. Wilson, serving a number of years on FinCom and others, but you know, sometimes it makes, might make sense not to fund OPEB to the level that we've always funded OPEB to, just so that we can remain number five in the state. Maybe that money is better used in another area. Anthony, speak up if I'm completely out of whack.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, you make it sense, yep.
And I, when, the danger in that, I guess, if you're talking about change the policy, I think flexibility in policy is a different thing. On a given year where we have something catastrophic or something huge that we needed money, then we draw it back to a more normal rate of more in line with every, a lot of other communities. But to change policy directly is a little more dangerous.
It's a three-headed monster. It's, it's going to bite a lot of municipalities in the, in the tail end.
It is, and I don't know, I've asked the question, I go, what does that mean? And a lot of them, you know, Sean doesn't know, he goes, it might mean nothing. What's the stake in it too? So, you know, I don't know, but.
That's cool. Town facilities.
I think there was actually a, an article that was, Dean Mazarello was on a meeting with him this morning, because Levensworth's fully funded their, their pension system, but there was, I think Providence? He just said there was a recent article that they went out and borrowed to fully fund it.
Because the rate was so low.
I don't know, but I, I thought he said it was like seven percent that they borrowed. I have to read the article, I haven't.
City of Providence, Rhode Island.
With a couple. Yeah, that's what I heard, so, yeah, I was gonna look that up, I just didn't have a chance today, but he brought it up at a meeting.
So, onto town facilities, revisit the facilities list from ten years ago to better understand maintenance and repair replacement needs.
It's me again, right?
Is that, is that for Town Hall or everything?
Everything. So we, we did this, PMBC was kinda the, the driving force behind this. Steve Moore was fantastic, as one of the champions in fully understanding this and presenting it at a number of different meetings, when, whenever a roof or something came up, Steve could speak to it, because he, he knew this list intimately. We, I believe we paid money to have this assessment done, and again, less than until we do fully fund and hire.
A facilities director. This goes away once we hire that.
Absolutely goes away, but one of those two things has to happen. If we don't take action on the facilities position, we need to take another look, because we can't, we can't have.
Well, I don't think you need that.
We can't have a water heater in our brand-new fire station blowing up and having to be replaced immediately that's not covered by any kind of warranty.
So what's, so, yeah, so what's the Select Board goal on this one?
See, I don't know, I think if, if we're making the facilities director a goal, and we haven't put a date in there, but if we're saying we're gonna get this done this year, then we don't need that.
I'm okay with, yeah, that, I always come as a facilities director from a different angle.
But that's a, it's a huge.
But I do think that whoever acts in that capacity may need for us to do this as well. That might be, we'll let them decide, absolutely. If they come in and they know what their, what their honey-do list is, it's gonna be helpful.
So all the rest of them are around Town Hall, so complete the space needs assessment for Town Hall, but I think, I think, Mark, you put this one in, but I think you meant, like, we do have a space needs assessment, right? You meant, like, revisit that in relation to the, all the, all the stuff that's going on.
And inflation, and, yeah. We probably, we probably need another, we don't need so much the needs assessment, we probably need another cost estimate type thing. And revisit, potentially revisit a little bit with the senior center project, right? How the, how the senior center affects the plan.
Yeah, we know square footage costs right now, so that's simple.
Well, that's, well, we know the cost for building, not remodeling.
Yeah.
Determine cost requirements for repairs, upgrades, or code compliance to Town Hall.
That kinda goes together, I think.
Yep, investigate the cost to move, build, or equip a new Town Hall, and determine the priority of those options.
We're working on that collectively, right?
Yeah, that's our board.
It's a process we already talked about?
Well.
Or.
I don't know, actually, if any of these are specifically planned out to be done.
But didn't we talk about a process we were gonna go through?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
Recently?
Yeah, I think the first two are something that I will champion, and the other, I think are going to happen organically.
I am fine if you, if you all agree that this is, those last two are already happening, then I will, I can just, I will move on.
Okay.
That's fine, I don't need to debate that. Agriculture. Rewrite the Charter of the AgCom Working Group to ensure no conflict of interest created by commercial or for-profit farmers. I actually talked to Tom Harrington today. And the reason was, at our last Orchard meeting, you know, Will Pickard, who I respect and who I think is very smart, spoke about how giving a tax break to the person who is going into the Orchard is not fair to the farmers in town. And he may be right. But that's not, that doesn't mean that that's in the town's best interest, that's definitely in his best interest to not give a tax break. And therefore, I think that's a conflict of interest with him, and I don't think it's fair to have him being, giving advice on, on the process for leasing the Orchard. We need to look at that from the point of view of, what's the best, what's the best thing for the town and the Orchard to do? And so, I'm suggesting that we need to rewrite the Charter in order to make sure that there's no conflict of interest on that, and I'm not sure exactly how to do that.
So, if I may just speak to that, I think Will was just bringing up a point. As far as the Select Board goes, as we're going through lease negotiations, to just be cognizant of that, we have a very strong agricultural community in Littleton, and that we need to be mindful of that group. When we're doing whatever we're doing with lease negotiations, with whoever we're gonna get through the RFP process, I don't, I don't see that as a conflict of interest.
And the intent of the, of the, I don't know that there's a charter or mission or whatever.
There's, yeah, there's a charter, yeah.
So the intent, the intent of that is, in fact, to have active members of our agricultural community so that they can.
Provide that input.
Provide that insight and input from that perspective, specifically.
I understand that, and there's absolutely value in having those people advise us, but when they start to make determinations about financial arrangements with, with land in town, it becomes a conflict of interest.
He was not making any determination.
He can't make a determination.
There's no RFP, there's no lease, we're not negotiating, they're not gonna be.
Well, but he's, he was making suggestions about what we do with the lease, I mean, that was plain as day. He said, let's, I don't think it's a good idea to do a tax break for the person who gets the. No, he didn't say that, he was like, I'm concerned about it, or it's just, you know, it's disheartening to hear.
Well, the thing is, to begin, we don't have the RFP yet, we don't know who's responded yet, the deadline's the seventeenth.
Yep.
And I think I've made that pretty clear, this board is the board that's gonna negotiate the lease. The AgCom Working Group, they can look at the RFPs, and they can definitely say, we like this one or we don't like that one.
There's no conflict there.
There's no conflict there, and there's certainly no, gonna be no discussion about any financial arrangement with anybody except for through this board and the LSE. So I, I don't.
Yeah, we've got care, custody, and control.
And, right, and at this point, the AgCom Working Group's pretty much done its job. We rewrote the RFP, we rewrote, you know, we made suggestions for the lease agreement, which has draft, watermarked all through it. You know, unless we don't get a viable candidate to take over the Orchard, and we need to proceed with the AgCom.
The Aglands Working Group?
The Aglands Working Group, there's, there's gonna be no more Aglands Working Group.
You think that that can be dissolved, then, basically?
There's gonna be no other purpose to it, I mean, that.
Until we get a new property.
The intent was to bring this group together and say, okay, what should we be looking at just to, you know, keep the Orchard in somewhat good condition? What action items do we need to attend to, which was really great to have all of their input? You know, and I personally appreciated Will's comment about just be mindful that there is a whole nother agricultural community in Littleton that, you know, we shouldn't forget about. And, and, because some people have said, you know, well, can we give them a tax break for a year? And it's like, you know, that's something that we need to talk about as a board, and it depends on who responds to the RFP. We don't know what we're gonna get yet.
So, let's say, but, so, okay, fine, like, but I think there is other, there are other ongoing things about the Orchard and the other Aglands that we control in town that probably need to be overseen in an ongoing basis. So, you know, is, is the maintenance plan for the Orchard being upheld? Are they paying their rent? Are they maintaining the buildings? And I, my understanding from the, reading the Charter of the Aglands Working Group is that was their domain, is they were like maintaining. Yeah, I can, I mean, I can go find the.
Orchard or the Ag.
Aglands Working Group, not the Orchard, the Aglands.
You're talking about the agricultural.
Oh, when we formed it, though, I sent you guys the language when the board voted to create that committee, and it was to, it was subject to lease negotiation, leases with town property that we own. It was just, it's not to oversight, oversee those properties, it was subject to the leases.
So then maybe we need to have another group that oversees the properties?
Honestly, Matthew, the only people that I think should be in charge are the Orchard. Based on the terms of our lease agreement, is the Town Administrator's Office or his appointee.
And, that's fine, as long.
And that's just me, that's something that this board needs to talk about as we go through the lease negotiation process. I don't think it's good for elected officials to be the conduit to oversee that Orchard. That was part of the reason.
We obviously suck at it, so.
We're horrible at it.
That's fine.
It needs to be.
That's fine.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you, as long as someone is looking at the maintenance agreement every year and making sure that everything is being upheld.
And it needs to be added to our calendar.
So.
No, but, do you know what I'm saying? So my, my proposal was, as we go through, like, the licenses, like, we do our annual license renewals with all our businesses in town, have the Orchard be part of that process, have them come in and just make sure that we're following our checks and balances. It's, to me, it's not that complicated if we just use systems that we already have in place and imply it to the Orchard.
So let's go back to the Aglands Working Group, not the Orchard.
Just one second, we keep talking about three different things, and I'm not sure.
Yeah.
You're calling something the Aglands Working Group, I don't know what that is, I know there's an Agricultural Commission and this Agricultural Working Group. I don't know what the Aglands Group is, so could you just tell me what, all these three we're talking about?
So, yeah, so, and I think I sent you guys that language when the board voted to create that committee. So they created an Ag, agricultural, AgCom Working Group, which was a subsidiary of the Agricultural Commission.
Where is their Charter?
But this is the Agricultural Working Group.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, there's, there's another one, hold on.
It's an agricultural group.
Well, you're talking about the Ag Commission.
No, Aglands, there was an Aglands Working Group.
Ag Commission.
I don't remember.
No, it was.
I don't ever recall.
I don't remember an Aglands Working Group.
Ag Work Group.
It's Littleton, Colorado?
Unfortunately, I've done that before, but no.
Yeah, the Ag Commission and the Agricultural Working Group.
I mean, I think, to your point, Cindy, I think, when you don't have somebody in charge of taking care of such a huge piece of land.
An asset.
Oh, yes, okay, here it is. To explore best practices, potential leases, and policies for town-owned agricultural land.
But Mark's point was, you were referring to it as the Aglands.
Sorry, my bad, it's the Ag, it's the Agricultural Working Group.
There's only two groups.
There's, and there's the Orchard, but like, yes, there's AgCom and this Working Group.
Right.
So, this is where I see a problem, because if, if commercial farmers in town are exploring best practices on potential leases for town land, that is a conflict of interest, because the leases that they sign are going to be.
They're not signing.
They're not signing.
Well, but they're, they're, they are making suggestions.
Care, custody, and control, but that's okay, we have other, we have other advisory groups that advise us.
Yeah, that's, that's dated 2013.
But Matthew, do you think this is a problem with what, with the Orchard?
With people that have their own farms.
So I, this, this, yeah, I think, I think it's a problem with the Orchard, yes, I do think it's a problem, well, I think it's a problem with the Orchard, probably not now. that it's done, but I think it's, I think it's a problem in general.
But he didn't provide any input. Yeah, I don't, I don't see that.
It's a great...
Personally, I, if we're voting on which ones are actually goals and let's move forward and get this done, we got a lot of lifting we got to do, I wouldn't die on the hill to make this a goal this year.
Yeah, I don't see the need for it.
Well, I think this, that, we'll, we'll come to the groups later.
I mean, the other thing, the AgCom Working, yeah, okay.
RFP and lease for the orchard is in progress. Cindy, I'm going to put you on that one, because you are driving that. Support involved consult AgCom as they present the needs of the farms in town.
I'll sign up for that.
Did you write that one down?
I have no idea, but I'll sign up for it.
Gary did. Yeah, you talked about the whole history of farming.
Well, that was another one. He said, create one-page bios for each farmer.
Yeah, I wanted that, too.
And they're already currently working on a video project.
Yeah, so, I mean, wouldn't you delegate that one-page thing to AgCom? That seems like exactly the sort of thing that AgCom should do.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
Okay. Communicate with farmers to be in the conversation should they choose to take action with their farmland. I don't know who put that one in. That was, that you?
Yeah.
What's your, what was your...
So, we've been talking for a number of years about, what group of farmers came available? Why didn't we have a pool of money so we could, we could have just exercised a right of first refusal and refusal and purchased that? So, we've talked about this trust that is...
The land trust.
What's that?
A land trust.
Yeah, land trust. So, we've talked about making sure that this is something that was set up like in the 80s or something like that, right? Nice part, I have Paul on the board, as he had the, he probably could have given us the exact town meeting vote, but, then institutional knowledge, but it's, I think it's important for us to have the communication with those property owners that we, we mostly know, and just have that open dialogue with them so that we don't come in behind the eight ball, whether the land's in chapter or what have you, and I think I put something in there as well, you know, in my, in the matrix that's in there.
It's in the conservation section, yeah, we're, yeah.
Okay, as far as, as far as funding source, so the land trust really falls under that, but I think we need to make sure that we are communicating with those farmers. Cindy, I think we talked about this a couple of years ago, about, I think Joe Knox actually was saying, he's had some conversations with some of the farmers with, I think, Will, I think with Jamie Cruz, with the Madison's, about what is their future? What is their succession plan? And, you know, whether or not they want to share that is up to them.
It's a delicate conversation.
It's extremely delicate, and there's families involved and that kind of thing.
This is also something that both Amy and Alicia brought up, that we needed a plan, like, if, if, if a farmland came up, do we have priorities in mind for which ones, any land comes up in town, priorities for, you know, which ones we, the town's most likely to want to purchase, and for different things. So, I think it all kind of goes together.
And we're going to get to that in the next big section.
Goes through the open space and recreation.
Yeah, there's a specific goal that I have.
So, I think this is the same thing, it's just taking it one step further.
I'll put this, and I think, I think I did. You did duplicate it, okay. There was one other thing. Nope, okay. So, conservation, open space. Revive or potentially recharter the open space plan committee. This is basically what you were just talking about. Like, there is an open space plan committee, but at that department heads meeting, we heard from Park and Rec and from conservation, and to some extent from DHBW, all about, like, dealing with the open space in town, whether it's mowing it, whether it's, you know, putting CRs on it, whether it's acquiring new stuff, right? And I think Amy and Kathy are working on the inventory of town land, but there's a bigger picture of, like, like you said, who's going to sell, and whether it's farmland or whether it's someone donating their, their, you know, what's been in the family for 50 years and they want to give it to conservation, there's a value in understanding the big picture and making sure that we're doing the right thing for each parcel. And I think that the open space plan committee is the closest thing that we have to that now, but the charter that it has doesn't quite match it, because it's kind of focused on recreation.
Dissolve and recharter.
Right, so we have an open space and recreation plan.
Right.
And I think Alicia said she was interested in maybe redoing that plan, updating that plan. I think it's a great idea, and one of the things I just, as far as the matrix that town, you know, Kathy Miller's working on with Alicia, I know Ed Mullins is involved in that subcommittee that's working on that, you know, as far as earmarking...
Kathy, yeah.
Land for conservation, I just want to bring up one situation that we ran into with respect to the bathhouse at Long Lake. So, we have a parcel of land that we could have utilized for a septic system for the bathhouse, but it's owned by conservation, and it's, it's a great...
Restricted.
It's restricted. We can't touch it. So, it's, it's really a very involved process when we start looking at these parcels, and you have competing interests, but we really need to, I think, have a broad, forward-thinking vision when we say that's going to go to conservation, or however we end up...
With the water department.
Going through the process, the water department, all of it, because that really was a hindrance. I mean, it would have solved a lot of problems if we could have used that land, you know, so it's, it's an involved process.
So, I really want, I really want to, like, like, own this, and I think that it really is not something that we're going to get done this year. I think we might be able to, like, start creating a framework for how to involve all the necessary parties in it, but I want to do it.
I don't know if you, that was a while ago, Nathan, if we used a consultant for that, for the open space and recreation plan.
I think it was on Marin Schools, wasn't it? Is that what you saw, on Marin Schools?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gail did that. Was Gail part of that? Gail Associates had the open space recreation.
I think we need professional assistance with that process, Matthew. It's not something that we can do.
Well, if Marin has it on our goals, I'm sure we'll hear about it.
Yeah.
And, and I'm, I can just, I can just coordinate with, with her and with Amy and with, you know, maybe else.
That will involve, yeah, a subcommittee, okay.
Mark, work with planning board on TDR?
Yeah, I put that up there just because I don't know if, what we, if we should, what our involvement is on the TDR process.
I'm on the TDR Working Group, which is, which is temporarily on hold because of 550 King Street and the other stuff. We just, we haven't had a chance to meet lately. And I can continue to, like, be, I mean, I think I was sort of leading that, that group.
As I said, when I filled out the matrix, I wasn't signing up for anything.
I'll put myself on that.
Well, Doc wants to...
No, I didn't say I wanted it. I was saying it's something that needs to be done.
He clearly said, he put his name on things that he didn't want. Work with conservation on developing right of first refusal, prioritization, and funding, more clearly defined funding mechanisms, savings account for potential purchase of parcels. Do you think that is the same as the first one, or that it's the funding mechanism is a separate goal?
I think it's separate.
Okay.
Yeah, this is an issue. We bought the Williams property, this was the issue I had.
Does that tie into what you guys were talking about earlier, flowers to CPC?
CPC, and then the land trust, and all of it, yeah.
Looking into that, because then you get that, that nice match of money.
Yeah, but we could, we could put monies from, where, I mean, we can, we can fund the land trust, which is what we've spoken about for the last three years.
Right.
And then if we have the opportunity to buy back or buy into the CPC to get a bigger hit, we can take money from there, move it from there, right, instead of taking it from free cash.
Well, if you up your CPC, you know, you don't have to think of it as, you know, you need, if it's a million dollars, you need to take a million dollars out of the CPC, because now if you have a...
Borrow against it.
Borrow against it, right. So, if you have that revenue stream that's going to be able to allow you to borrow against it, and then to get that match from the, from the state, I, I just think it probably is worth more looking into as far as what's the best way to get the biggest bang for our buck.
I think borrowing, borrowing against it, once again, on a extreme situation where there's an absolute piece of land that the town has identified as wanting, it comes up for sale, be it historical, whatever bucket, call it whatever it is, and we, where, that's how we, that's where we'd, like, exercise that, but I don't think just using it borrowing as a...
No, but we should definitely analyze, because it's, as far as what would be our capacity being in the CPC that you would consider that, because 1% may not be able to do very much.
You can shift money every year between buckets, too.
So, is, is the CPC the only avenue that we're going to go down on this, on this?
Well, I just say CPC, no. I say CPC just because, you know, you get that nice match from the state.
But do you get the match when you borrow? I think you, I think you have to have the funds secured.
You get the match, you put in, right? So, it's whatever we put in, and then if we put more in...
Which if we had the land trust, we could take that pool of money and put it, put more into the CPC bucket to get the match. Am I wrong?
Well, I'm just, why not just throw it in? Do I have another step? Why not just throw it into the CPC?
You throw it into CPC, and then you take it out to pay the bill that you borrowed, is what I think he's saying.
Well, one's, one's being identified for, for land use, and the other CPC's got a lot more in there than just...
We can't borrow from it and then put it back into the CPC. Is that what you're saying, Chuck?
Right.
Yeah. So, right.
But you can put it in the CPC and then pay the bill for what you borrowed out of it, so...
So, yeah.
But not, but not all, not all projects are going to qualify under CPC.
So, the land trust would cover some more things in that, yeah.
Outside of the bounds.
So, can I make a suggestion on those? That, that third bullet, the first sentence, the work with conservation, that goes with the first goal.
Okay.
Right, and then the last, the second sentence goes with a increased CPC funding.
Okay.
Can, can I just throw another wrench into this?
No.
So, the planning board set up their bylaws, right? So, a certain, a developer, you know, has a ability to either provide an affordable housing unit or give money to the housing trust, right? You know, I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust. We've got an awesome rental voucher assistance program that's been really successful, and this is something we need to talk about as a trust, but the ability of the trust ever to have enough money that we're going to be able to, like, buy a piece of property or buy down a unit in this market, it's not going to happen, and it's a sad reality. Part of me wants to go to the planning board and say, rewrite the bylaw so that the money doesn't go to the Affordable Housing Trust, because we already get enough money through that cycle anyways, just through the CPC, to fund our rental voucher program. Put it into a land trust, because the big problem is all this development, right? Why would, why wouldn't we ask the money to be shifted to the land trust instead of the Affordable Housing Trust, when we know that our abilities, our capabilities are going to be really limited in this market?
Yeah, so I think that all goes along with the same goal, is trying to figure out how to get funding for these projects, right?
Right, so to me, that's another potential funding source, but that is dependent on the planning board.
So, I'm, so you, you had taken the CPC increase, so I put that other, that comment we just had about, you know, the find ways to do the right of first refusal, more clearly defined funding mechanisms, savings account for potential purchase of parcels in with the CPC thing?
Yeah.
So, you can take, you can have that as your goal?
Yeah.
Like, both of those things seem to go together?
Okay.
Okay. Housing.
Oh.
Are we ready to move on?
No, no, I'm just laughing, because we were just talking about that.
Habitat House, I'm, I'm actually just emailed Carolyn today about waiting for the perk test to come in, so I'm going to, I'm going to do that one. Explore new Affordable Housing Trust initiatives. That was Cindy. What, what are...
We need to, and I think it's further down, Matthew.
Yeah.
We need to create a manual and a guide for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, I see it there.
We need a written, because I know it's happened, because I've been on the board since the beginning, so does Bartlett, but there's nothing, nothing's been memorialized. We need to do that.
What, what sort of things are you thinking?
It's just whatever we've talked about, like, what are our short-term goals? What are our long-term goals? What's going to be our funding mechanism, you know, as far as, you know, how much, you know, how are we going to use the money that we get through the CPC every year? Where is that going to go? Like, none of that's written down. Like, we need to solidify that.
I mean, I'm going to leave that in your domain.
Okay.
Then move forward with the Durkey Farmhouse project. And my comment here was, does, does the select board have a role in this? Or is that just the Affordable Housing Trust?
No, it's just the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, I'm going to just go leave that one then. Revive the stationary committee and the common revitalization committee.
Those are two separate goals, aren't they?
They are, they are. I think the stationary is going to come back soonish, is my, is my impression.
So, I don't think this is necessarily a goal, because I think if the committee comes back, then that's just an assignment and something to monitor, probably, right?
When you say revive it, it's all right.
Revitalize revitalization committee.
It's just moribund right now, because we, 550 King Street happened.
So, we have, we have the Littleton Common revitalization plan that the planning board put together. There's a bunch of action items. There's a whole matrix at the end of that report about who's supposed to be doing what. Nobody's done anything about it, to no one's fault of their own, but a lot of the things that are recommended in that report are happening organically anyways through the planning board. We had a, the Littleton Common Committee.
Well, there are two different committees.
Yeah, so...
And we have a committee discussion later, and maybe, maybe this will come up, but I want to...
Yeah, perfect.
But, but I do want to, like, let's remember that, that there's, there's action items in that report that have been done, because we might have to add that to our list later. Okay. Partner with the state to identify partners to help with affordable housing, i.e. CHAPA. I think this was you, Chuck?
Yeah, it was. CHAPA is an organization that is the, kind of like the leading arm for affordable housing in the state. So, just, they, they put municipalities together with 501(c)(3)'s, builders, vendors.
Nonprofit builders, yeah.
Exactly, so they kind of have all under one umbrella, under their website, on the state website, mass.gov. So, just, you know, form those relationships. We used to have a really good relationship with, with J. Harp, and we've, we've got a decent relationship with Secretary Kneale in his office, not at the same level that we did, we didn't share milkshakes with him, but, but I think that there's, there's other relationships like that that we can try to create and leverage, exactly. So, just because I know that this is something that you've put a ton of time and effort into, and there, there are resources available so that, although it might be challenging to see us purchasing something that is under the care, custody, and control, or a project that is, is developed by Affordable Housing Trust, partnering with, with organizations within CHAPA, I think would definitely...
Right, and that's what we talked, so, like, Jerky Farmhouse is a perfect example of that. We're not building Jerky Farmhouse.
Well, Robinson Road would have been, too.
Right, so we're going to partner with somebody once we get that property turned over to us? So, is this something you want to, the Affordable Housing Trust can certainly make that connection, or...
I think, I mean, yeah, I mean, if you need any help with it, I'm happy to, you know, try to see if I have any relationships that we can leverage, but I, I do think it falls under the Affordable Housing Trust, and if you're going to, I think you have a passion for that, and you want to stay with that.
Right.
So, I don't, it's not really, it's not totally, I guess it is kind of a select board goal. I mean, you could have it as a select board goal, or we could just have it on the Affordable Housing Trust list. It's up to you.
Yeah.
It's, it's really...
Well, it can be like a joint thing.
Yeah, I'm happy to work on that and try to help you, just, just to create some relationships.
Whoops, I'll put both of you on that one.
The two houses across the street from that Durkey house, they just go for, like, one point, whatever.
Don't, don't, I'm just, I'm in the wrong business, man.
Trying to train tracks in the backyard.
Economic development, scheduling quarterly joint meetings with the EDC, extending invite to Littleton Business Association.
I can tell you right now that quarterly meetings for the EDC right now is way premature. I think we can have that as an, as an expectation, but to do it right now, it's, it's, it's a very green board. All the members have never been at a meeting together, like, nobody's ever met each other at that one meeting.
Is it because of COVID, or is it...
I think we can have that as an, as an expectation, but to do it right now, it's, it's, it's a very green board. All the members have never been at a meeting together, like, nobody's ever met each other at that one meeting.
Is it because of COVID or is it?
No, it just did. I'll take some of the responsibility for it, but it just, we, we really weren't just able to get the people that are very talented people that we, we definitely want to keep on there. Conflicts, you know, a lot, a lot happened that kept us from getting a quorum. I mean, we, we were in this building a number of times with three or four of us and we just couldn't meet. The other thing is, I'd say is, I think one of the members that we did appoint, we, we upped it from five to seven so that we could get a quorum. And we had three people, I think Leona was one of them, Lynda B.
Never came, right?
Yeah. We ended up, we ended up appointing three people instead of two. Well, Leona ended up, Lynda B moved to Florida, so she's gone. So I think we, we ratcheted it back to seven. So that doesn't, seven, eight doesn't matter in the quorum. Seven or eight doesn't matter in the quorum. And those, those seven people have literally reached out to all of them. Leona, we had the wrong email address for Leona.
Oh.
Just came off her application, whether it got transposed, I'm not really sure. But now we have, this, this month, we're, we're looking forward to all being in a room together and
So it's the goal.
A lot of that.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I don't know that anything specific to the, I think the EDC needs to have their own goals.
Mm-hmm.
I think the, the, the goal
Great, so.
On the board should be.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we ask the EDC to set goals and share their goals with us?
I have one here, it's charge the EDC with creating a plan.
Ah.
And I think that's exactly what, what.
So if you look at, if you look at the matrix, I put down EDC to report back to select board, end of September with an EDC plan.
Perfect, that's, I think that's why I put in the end of September on the date, on this one, okay, good. Improve the relationship with the Littleton Business Association, I didn't, I don't know who put that one in?
That was probably me.
Okay.
I just don't know what the relationship is between the develop, EDC and LBA, right?
Yeah.
If there is one or if the.
There has been in the past, mostly related to SURE. The LBA was had ideas of what the EDC should be doing to try to promote the SURE. And it was potentially, I wouldn't say it was conflict interest, but it was the tail wag of the dog a little bit. And we just, and again, we didn't have enough meetings.
There's no representation.
There's nobody from the LBA that is, that sits on the EDC.
Yeah, Paul and Joe used to go to.
They're still members.
Yeah, they're still members of that.
Is there any goal here for us?
Mark put it on there, I don't know.
Yeah, do you think, I mean, I think he was, he was looking for information, I think.
I think it's something that, well, I don't want to, I know that we've, we've got as part of our plan to be more engaged with LBA, to be more engaged with frankly, Middle, Middlesex Valley Chamber of Commerce, who had the event tonight.
Yeah.
And just other organizations along the 495 corridor, just to try to
Okay.
Real estate groups, you know, like commercial realtors and things like that.
That can just be one of the goals of the EDC.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Mark, you had revive common revitalization committee?
Yeah, I think that just keeps coming up on all of them.
Okay, and I will, I think we're going to, we are going to talk about that later.
Go into that under committees.
Everyone had, continue working on 550 King Street, there's no real measurable goals there, but we're obviously all doing that all the time. I am really interested in what's going on with the points wastewater treatment. I haven't heard anything about that in a long time.
It's kind of outside our lane though, that's, we've got, I mean, there's DEP that's.
Yeah, I was going to ask, um, maybe, maybe Nick can give us an update on it.
He does have, he definitely has a lot of information on it.
Nick does, yeah.
Yeah, just because he works.
He gets reports from.
Yeah.
But again, is that a goal? We certainly want to have it.
Yeah, no, I guess probably, no, probably not. Work with Littleton Electric Light for sewer timeline and funding and grants.
That's what you guys are doing now.
Yeah, but I did, I don't think, I don't know, I don't think I put that one on there. But I don't know who did, I don't remember. Okay, I mean, it's just, that's ongoing, right?
I put that on there.
Okay.
It was late.
It wasn't, it wasn't. It wasn't something that I was suggesting that I do, so.
Okay.
But, yeah.
I mean, I, staying on top of the timeline, those two, the property and what the sewer is doing is so importantly connected to a timeline that we have to make sure that we're just and that's through that group, that sewer work.
It goes hand in hand with all the, all the attention we're paying to 550 King Street. I think we can't really separate those two things.
You can't.
Correct.
Yeah.
I do, I mean, I've been, the only time that I wasn't a member of the sewer working group was when Chase was on board. For obvious reasons, this engineering and all that kind of stuff, but after he left, I went back on with Paul. And I think the continuity has, has been, we, we had a, the last meeting that we had, I think was beneficial.
Yeah, definitely, I want you in the room for all those meetings, absolutely. Monitor Littleton Common infrastructure needs and increase traffic flow while promoting a walkable common. I didn't, I don't, I didn't think there were specific, that wasn't specific enough, I didn't know who put that in.
Gary did.
Yeah, I think, so, yeah, I was trying to capture, just losing sense, who, who drives that train? We're talking about a lot of money being dumped into infrastructure, I mean, the state obviously has something to do. How, where's the input coming from? And I, I just don't know what type of control we have, what's our, are we at the table and we're talking about, when you're talking like a third lane on King Street.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would throw this under part of the charter of the Common Revitalization Committee.
Yeah.
So, I think that's, I mean, I.
Well, I definitely would want reports on that because that's, there's some big changes that could come there, you know, keep that traffic pattern and then.
Have you read the roadmap? The Littleton Common Revitalization Roadmap, it's a good report.
But if we're, that's what I mean though, as long as are we following that?
Yeah, so.
That's where I worry about walkable common, we, we keep talking and well, let's.
But that existed before 550 King Street changed hands.
I know.
So that's, there's a lot that's changing, I think that's where you're going as far as what was mentioned at the Poli Companies was that, that, you know, the potential of third lanes and.
I mean, drawings are nice, but.
Mass Wars grants are going to have a lot of impact on the infrastructure and the layout and, and it's the big concern, the focus is what it's going to do to traffic, so.
I think that, so that, I think that's an open one that we don't really know how we're going to address, but it's, but that, that's, that's a very important goal that we should monitor.
We, I think it is important for us to monitor, I think it lies very much on, on the desk of our town administrator. I also think Mr. Yanley plays a huge role in that being, you know, and we Steve has a relationship with Mass DOT, Mass Highway and that, and I, I had something that was right in this kind of realm as well, but it's bringing foot traffic over to the point and back.
I saw that one.
From the point to to 550 King Street, which I don't think will be part of this, this round of Mass Wars grants, but Anthony brought the point up and I think Gary brought the point up when we're up there. That.
Every year.
Yeah, it doesn't mean we can't go for a Mass Wars grant next year and the year after, the year after that. And I think they're going to see as they take a look at this project, and it's very much a project that is on the, you know, the radar for the state as a whole. I think they, they're going to see that that bottleneck going over the 495 bridge is, is something that needs to be addressed in some way, shape or form.
Appointed boards and committees, so I feel like, you know, Cindy, you sent me a list which was very helpful of like committees that were sort of, at least a few years ago, had been dissolved or reviewed. So I have a suggestion that we look through the committees and like, make one of, one following recommendations. Remove or disband it if it's inactive or unnecessary. Recharter it if we feel like that, the charter isn't accurate. Try to re-energize the ones which are moribund and, you know, you're talking about the EDC, like, let's give them something to do. Assign a liaison, which I think there are a couple of boards that we need a liaison on. Or leave it alone, or just invite, invite people in for a progress report for fiscal year 23, because there's some boards that we haven't seen in a long time. Sustainability is a great example of that.
Yeah.
And I have a list down below of the boards and, and, you know, again, what I think, but this is all subject to discussion. We would need to review finalized relevant new charters with input from the committee members if necessary. Invite one to three committees to each select board meeting, I think this was Mark, to hear reports, assigned tasks, discuss charter changes, et cetera. Chair will work with TA's office to schedule.
I think one to three, one to three is, I think one is adequate.
Yeah.
We've got plenty of meetings and we could spread that out and it'll be easier for us to schedule one. If we're, if, if we plan to do that, I, I think if they've got something to say, it's great to have them come in. If they really don't have anything to say.
I know.
Well, but see.
We've got a lot of other stuff we've got to do.
I think what happens is they don't have anything to say and they're not doing anything. So is it, is it in our, is it in our mission to try to get them to do something and/or find new people or a new, a new purpose for them to do something?
So to that and that offer that maybe we have one meeting a year where we kind of give them a performance evaluation.
That's not a bad idea.
And we, we, you know, one meeting a year that we schedule just to review the usefulness of a board or committee. How was our attendance, you know, how was our representation?
Right.
Do we need to change the charter?
Right, and that's on that.
Report card for each.
Right, exactly, and that's on the select board calendar that we do have, is where we are supposed to invite them in. I think a lot of them would appreciate that because I think they feel like we appoint them and we don't give them any direction or any support, so.
Yep.
I think that's a great idea.
Um, do you, so do we invite them all in to talk about, or do we just talk about it behind their backs and then tell them? You know what I mean? Like, if we have one meeting and all the committees are invited, that, that seems like, that seems like.
Didn't you used to have at one time a chair, what was it called, Chair of Chairs Committees? And just one annual meeting where you kind of just.
The chairs, yeah.
All the chairs from all the boards came?
That's actually not a bad idea.
Was it a committee of chairs or?
It was, it had a name.
Yeah, it was.
Chair of Chairs Committee.
Chair, Chair of Chairs.
The Board of Chair of Sheriff's Committee, yeah.
The chair's the chair.
Okay, so. Um, I, I think that's a great idea.
Put the chair committee.
Yeah, the chair committee.
So, I'm going to have to say, so I don't know who will manage inviting one committee, who will manage creating, I don't want to put everything on Anthony, even though he's going to end up doing it.
It's realistic.
Sorry.
I think something like the town clerk can be a big help.
That's actually, that's a great point, okay. Post-committee vacancies to solicit new members, was that? Who did you put that one in?
Um, oh.
Was that you, Cindy?
I don't know.
We do post them, don't we?
Well, Anthony's got it on. I think we were doing that anyways, weren't we?
Yeah, what I was thinking with this too is, is after we do all the appointments over the next couple of meetings, we determine, you know, we don't have positions completely filled for all the committees, but maybe at the start of every select board meeting, that would kind of be one of my mail updates, just to remind the residents that we're still looking for members for whatever, EDC, Cultural Council.
I think when people are walking into town meeting, they, there should be a big, one of the slides should be here, all the board vacancies.
We want yous.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, great, so you're going to add that to your, to your update?
Yeah, once we get through with this, I'm going to.
Okay. And then Littleton Common Revitalization Roadmap, monitor infrastructure needs and increase traffic flow. So that has, I moved that down here because it seemed to go along with the Littleton Common Revitalization Committee, which, which seems redundant because there's the, also there's the Littleton, what is the other one, the Littleton Common Committee? There's another, there's, there's another one, I wasn't sure what those two, how those two are different.
They're not.
But are there?
Where are?
There, there are two of them, aren't there?
Yeah, we, I thought we did.
Dissolved the common committee.
Littleton Common.
We dissolved the common committee.
Um, it's still on here, is there, but is there a revitalization as well?
On the town website?
I'm looking at, the common committee is on the town website.
The Common Revitalization is not.
Yeah, so maybe we, maybe we disbanded the revitalization?
Oops. I don't, I think there were revitalization, you had one meeting and it never.
If you took a vote, we could figure that out.
Okay.
Some of those look like they were gone already.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know that that list is.
It just may have not been inactive on the website, but doesn't mean it's an active committee.
So, you know, obviously, I think, you know, here's my list of ones that I think are, no action is needed that, you know, the land sale committee meets when it needs to. Zoning, LCTV, historical, FinCom, obviously, you know, I don't know what, does the insurance advisory committee meet?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's the employees, Michelle gets together with all the unions and so forth, we did that a month ago or something.
Orchard Working Group, COA, ConsCom, CPC, Affordable Housing Trust, all are functional. I would like to hear from BPAC. I'd actually talked to Gary LaCroix the other night at a scout, Eagle Scout, at that Eagle Scout thing, and he gave me an update on it, but I still would like to hear from them. Clean Lakes, Cultural Council.
BPAC should be busy because we have that bicycle and pedestrian plan that you guys are going to be approving that contract on Monday, so. Down Harvard Ave, right, they were on Harvard Ave measuring stuff.
Disability, Shade Tree and Sustainability, they're just, they're just committees that I, I don't know what they're doing.
Shade Tree's got a, they're doing great.
Okay, well, I'd love, I'd love to hear from them.
Yeah, they actually, they had come in, I think it was two years ago, they actually have a whole plan.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're great.
Let's ask them in for, yeah, okay.
Um, yeah, onion picks there, okay.
Assigned work, space needs, I mean, Mark and Gary, you got, you, you both asked for that under our, our board appointments. I think the new old town hall conversation is, is going to be a meaty, you know, project for that one. Taxation, the TRED, obviously revamped the work off program, you mentioned that earlier. EDC, we talked about, AGCOM, you talked about adding one-page bios, but that would be something that AGCOM could do.
So just for clarity, there's no action needed or schedule an update on AGCOM, so which are they in?
There's no action needed or, I'm sorry, say that again?
They're not under no action needed and they're not under scheduled.
Yeah, they're right here, they're under assigned work.
So we're, so Gary's going to talk to them, but they're not coming, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I had to, I, I just, I kind of picked one category for each, maybe they, maybe they need to be in more than one.
Okay.
I think we need a liaison to lighten water.
What day do they meet?
I can meet, I can be with them, it's Wednesday.
Okay. I'd really like to get them to televise their meetings. Littleton Common Committee and the MBTA Advisory Committee.
That MBTA Advisory Committee, I thought we abolished that.
No, the MBTA Advisory Committee.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I, I sit on that, I represent, so it's a group that meets, every community that has in the MBTA, we meet. Not much that goes on there.
Once a year?
No, it's, it's maybe once every couple of months.
Isn't that like the magic region or?
No, it's through the, it's through the MBTA Advisory Board, that's what it's called.
But it's a quote unquote.
Regional, right, you guys are.
It's the, no, this one, well, everybody in the MBTA region. Anybody there?
I thought there were different regions, like the Pittsburgh line had one meeting.
Well, those are regional transportations, this is MBTA specific.
Okay.
Mark has different.
But what's, what's the value of you finding out what's going on at Oak Grove?
It's not, but they talk about, but no, there's a lot of things that, that go on, especially with the commuter rail and how it affects.
That's what I mean, the Pittsburgh line, commuter rail, Pittsburgh commuter line.
Right.
So does the MBTA come to these and tell you what's going on, or do you just discuss it with other, with other communities?
It's all via Zoom right now.
Yeah, it's all via Zoom and somebody will come and during the budget process, they go through the ET's budget and so forth and.
Okay.
Alright, so it's still. It's not, it's, it's still active.
Okay.
But it's just you, so it's not any.
Yeah.
It's not, you're not missing.
I'm going to put that under no action needed. The Littleton Common Committee and the Littleton Revitalization, so we have a couple like action items that are kind of tied up together. There's the, you know, the infrastructure for 550 King Street, there's the walkable downtown, and then there's these two committees and we don't know which one is active. So I'm trying to figure out how to, how to approach this and, and what the, what the best way forward is. Is there value in having the common committee?
How about I take on, because Anna and Delisa and I were, as far as I know, the only three members of the revitalization committee
Gary was on it.
This year, you were on it?
Gary was on the Common Revitalization Committee.
As far as wanting to be on it.
No, you were on it, you were the FinCom representative.
Oh, it's a shame.
Oh, we did, we, we brought together that whole committee, it was too big, wasn't it?
Well, it ended up being just Delisa, Anna and I.
Yeah.
In the end, and I can reach out to them and find out where that's at, and I think we can cobble together between the two committees. It was my understanding that we abolished the common committee.
Okay.
And I feel, right, and I think we actually appointed people to the common committee and then they just, which really stinks because they came out to get involved and they just fell by the wayside.
So, yeah, so do we?
Do you want to do some digging and find out which committee is actually?
That would be good, and also what their charter is and, and who's on it, because do we need, you know, just select board and planning board on that committee? I mean, I don't know what it's, I don't know what, what we're trying to get out of it.
Were you trying to look at the revitalization roadmap and implement the recommendations in that report? Would that be the charge of the common committee?
Sounds reasonable to me.
We can, once we find out what we have, we can kind of restart the engine, you know?
Chuck, so you're going to look into those committees?
Yeah, I'll try to.
Okay, that's good.
We can saw on what exists and.
Who's on revitalization?
We've never met.
Planning Board, Affordable Housing.
That's news to me.
I've never received an email.
Oh dear, okay, well, I'm glad we're talking about it then.
Awesome.
Revive Common.
Three of those people.
Okay, that's something on there. Station area, Mark and Gary are on that when it comes back, transfer of development rights is Matthew. Recharter the work, Ed Working Group, we'll talk about that. Open space and recreation plan implementation, the plan is no longer valid or it's outdated, our lack of compliance may preclude us from receiving grants. It's from 27, it's 2017 or 2012, I can't remember.
I think it's 17.
Yeah, okay. This, this one I would like to look into because it, I think it dovetails with the things we were talking about where we have a townwide strategy on open space. And I'm not sure that this committee is the right, I'm not sure that their charter is correct.
I think this is the one, though, if we're going to revisit the rec, the open space and recreation plan, we're going to need a consultant to help with that process.
You did say that earlier.
Yeah, there's no way that a committee is going to be able to undertake updating that report, it's going to be, it's a lot.
All right.
So, we're going to need.
I think I had that.
Someone to find a grant to pay for that funding source.
Yes, okay, I, so I have, need professional assistance written down there, okay. Roadway improvements, strategy for 119 bridge, that was Chuck.
Sorry, I was thinking of.
That's okay, I mean, we're almost done.
Sanders is doing a great job on this.
George Sanders is going to get us.
Put George Sanders down.
We're going to have a flyover, we're going to have a monorail.
A glass gerbil tube from the point to 550.
He's doing a great job, he reached out to Senator Markey's office, he asked the senator to come out here and so. Much is great, he's, he really is, yeah, so.
He's going to, he's going to have, he's going to.
The George Sanders 195 flyover.
We will name it, we'll name it.
But seriously, like, is that, is there a plan, is there a select board goal for that bridge?
I think that's a long-term plan because, you know, you're not going to get that planned anytime soon.
We're getting the rotary on 119 up the road, right?
Yeah.
That is something that we.
It's a roundabout.
It's a traffic mitigation system.
Right, I think that there's, once you get the rotary, I think that a roundabout.
No, stick with rotary, thank you.
It, it adds to the chance that we can get it addressed.
Okay.
Okay.
And then shake a lean side, what we talked about earlier, okay, transportation, crosstown connect, someone put that in and I didn't know what.
I put that in, but I just.
Yeah, I had something in there as well with it.
So it's shut off right now?
It's more about.
Just on hold.
It's more about expanding, we're going to, once 550 King Street, because then once again, we, these things need to be relooked a little bit and how we revamp these and expand.
But is this, is this a goal or is this just, we need to look at it in the future?
Yeah, it's probably one of those two to five year.
Research more regional options and partnerships while pursuing grants and increased options for the town's growing population needs. Is this you, Mark, or Chuck?
Might have been me.
Okay.
Who's TAC?
The Transportation. The TAC, it should be Transportation Advisory Committee, yeah. Is this something we delegate to them?
Track is one of the park and rec programs. After school program for the teens.
Slap a finger.
So, we do an intermunicipal agreement with Boxborough, they do a municipal agreement with us for cable, we do it for animal control. There's, there's got to be other options and other opportunities for us to work with regional.
Absolutely, I've said that.
Partners, and I think that, and I, somewhere else I put a goal that we have a summit with surrounding communities and do some of their leaders just to say, hey, what's working for you guys, what's not working for you guys, we've had success with this, and what about you? Just, I mean, and I think some of, they kind of play together, but I do think we need to, I mean, I'm going to go back on, we purchased a, in excess of a million dollars, 1.2, 1.4 million dollar tower truck. AIR's got a high-reaching piece of equipment, Boxborough's got one, Acton's got one, I mean, Westford, so there's, there's a lot of them around us and, you know, maybe we could have worked out some sort of an agreement where if we know that we're going to need a tower, a ladder, a straight stick, or whatever, we're going to pull the alarm for a mutual aid. That may or may not be realistic, we're probably not at that point in society right now, but before digital purchased the first ladder truck for us, we didn't have one. So, that's an example, obviously, we're not going to go backwards, but what are some other opportunities for us? And it could have something to do with the transfer station, I know Chris Stoddard and I had talked a number of times and Ashley's looked at a lot of the other communities, you know, maybe Groton does a really good job of crushing glass, maybe we do plastic, and then we talk to Acton and they do paper, you know, this, there might be opportunities for each of the communities to make an investment that will help all of us. I don't know what those opportunities are.
Do you have anything specific that we could, I mean, do you have a way to, a way to find those things or ideas on how to find them or pursue them?
Think about, we did another regional, the IMA for the electrical inspector at Acton, so.
I mean, but is it just, we, 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 we jump after them when they, when they appear, or is there something of where we can go out and look? I mean, I wouldn't know where or what to look for.
If you digitalize anything, you think about it.
Yeah, but.
So, Anthony, do you talk to the town administrators as a group in the surrounding towns? And, and the select board or, I mean, are there reports coming back on what, what we could regionalize on some of these things or what their needs are, or how we can work together on these things?
I'd be open to inviting the town administrators and town managers and the select boards from surrounding communities, school committees, whatever, having a big summit. Throw some pizzas at us and say, just, just have it be about regionalization, what have you done, what have you thought about?
We meet with the Chobe Valley Chair of Commerce, host a monthly meeting with the administrators and managers in the region, and I can ask Melissa to put that on a future agenda, just to have a roundtable discussion about regionalization.
Yeah, I just, I think those conversations should start happening.
Chuck, I think this can start with one-on-ones, I'm not going to say assign each one of us a town, but I mean, I, I mean, I have a cousin that's on the.
Acton.
Acton Select Board. Have breakfast with them one day and talk about these type of things, you know what I mean, that, that's how those relationships could probably at least cultivate and start.
Yeah, begin them, yeah.
You know, one of us could talk, you know, sit on there with AIR, go for coffee, and just.
Our park and rec commissioners are talking about, you know, big thinking aquatic center, or there's, there's.
That's a huge regional idea, you know.
Yeah, absolutely, why, why can't we leverage resources from a couple of different communities and make something like that happen, and then, you know, somebody else puts in a rink, you know, there's just, there's, there's opportunities, I think, because, I mean.
Are you talking about just in, as far as projects like space and things like that, or just?
No, I think departments, the departments could do it, I mean.
You know, when I was in.
Regional schools, library.
I was responsible for the only regional library in the state, Hamilton County Regional Library. She had the expenses with and it's a pretty nice place.
Yeah, so my boss is on, lives in Groton, and he's, they're looking into electronic voting. And he had said to me, you know, has Littleton ever looked into that, he's on a committee, he's like, is it something that they might be looking to partner with another community?
Electronic voting for.
Town meeting. Town meeting.
Yeah, I brought that up when I first came back and didn't go over too well.
Right.
If it's a, if it's a shared resource.
So, he was saying what Littleton might be interested in sharing that resource with us.
The moderator wasn't interested in doing something like that, so I think that that's a discussion you have to have with Tim, because we could have used, at the time, we could have bought it using CARES money. We ended up giving back CARES money because we didn't use all that CARES money, so that's what I did in, in Hamilton, in Wenham, I did electronic voting, so I have experience doing it.
But that's a good point, because they don't necessarily, they don't, not necessarily, they don't use those machines on the same nights that we use them.
Yeah, their town meeting's on Saturday.
So, yeah, so we, we talked about this over the North Shore, there was, there's certain numbers of, of devices that you have to get, and what we need might be different than what Groton needs, so you'll have to accommodate for the largest community and then somebody has to be responsible for them and.
So, maybe.
That's an IMA, though.
I actually, yeah, I think we're in the weeds here.
Yeah, we are.
I'm just wondering about that.
Very specific, but that's a good example.
It's an example, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's a lot of value here, there's potentially a ton of value here if we can, but I think the.
Specificity.
Yeah, well, the goal should be how we, how we find them, like, I think we could do anything with, with, you know, we could probably find a way to work.
What makes more sense, regionalizing, whether it's a resource, whether it's a.
Or how do we identify something like electronic voting that makes sense for us? I think that's more of what we should be worrying about than necessarily how, how many voting units we need.
I don't want to put fly in the ointment, but right now, we're going, we're, we just went through reorganizing our, our health department, or creating a health department, and maybe.
Maybe, yeah, right, maybe.
Somebody else that was part of.
Wanted to jump off of Chobe.
How about a grant writer?
Yahtzee.
That's another, right, I mean, seriously.
Yeah, for, for, for a group of towns.
Right, so I mean, I think we look at it both ways, I mean, Anthony's already connected with a group of other town administrators, town managers that speak regularly. He can use his resource, Gary, you know somebody on the Acton Select Board, you could use that resource, I don't think it needs to be an either or, why not do?
Oh, absolutely, parallel paths, yeah, sure.
And see what we come up with.
But, so how do we, how do we figure out what to go after and keep track of them, right, like, these are all great ideas, is there a list we keep, is there a document, is there?
Well, I think it depends, so I think, you know, maybe we say to Anthony and whoever, hey, you know, we, I don't know when your next meeting is with that group, Anthony, or how often you talk to them, but hey, maybe this is something we revisit and have a discussion, did you guys find out anything, are there any ideas that came back? And then based on those ideas, that's how we decide how we're going to move forward.
So, just reading ahead, Chuck has under other goals, host a summit with surrounding community boards, so can we just?
Sure.
Put this.
Tie it into that, yeah, thank you, I did mention that.
And that gets done, that Acton was doing that, was Acton, no, what, Pepperell, the chairess, Pepperell was doing it for.
Sustainability, yeah.
A couple of those with Renato.
Yeah.
Was it, was it worthwhile, was it like valuable, do you think?
I think it is just for, if, if for no other reason than the networking part and the sharing of ideas and, you know, oh, you guys did that, how did it work out, you know, so I think there's, I think there is value to that.
Okay. Do you want to take the lead on trying to organize that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, again, like, I, I don't think we've really figured out how to identify regionalization opportunities. Maybe we can't right now?
No, besides making it a priority, kind of knowing what, maybe with ours neighboring towns, that's a conversation, that's all.
Well, we do that, Chief Pannard's working, we're on a regional detective, so, you know, it, I think it's one of those things where I can talk to department heads and just. Be mindful of regional opportunities, because they do do it, they do.
We're open to it.
Right.
Well, Chief Carter was even, we were, during our public safety meeting, he, he was bringing up regionalization fire departments, and I said, nah, it'll never happen in the state, and he goes, I don't know, it's, it's getting to that point, especially in some of the smaller communities.
Right, so much mutuality.
So, in addition to talking to department heads, I think the other thing would be just to document what we do, right? So, you know what, I mean, I don't know what the regionalization things are, I don't know anyone here does, potentially Anthony, it might be nice to know what we already are doing, so that we know who to explore other opportunities with.
That's a good point.
I don't want to, again, I'm not adding all this to you, Anthony, but I'm just taking notes, so I remember you.
Send that out later, I'll go.
Plans to better support alternative forms of transportation, bike lanes, trails, sidewalks, et cetera, my comment was, is this something that we delegate to the BPAC or the TAC?
I think TAC's working on a lot of that and BPAC, too.
Who, do you know who, who put that one in?
I probably did, but.
I did it on the common, but I think it's all related, it's, it's going to be so important, I mean, everything now is a bike lane that we're putting in, I mean, that's a huge thing. They were measuring down Harwood Ave, and I didn't even know we were putting bike lanes on Harwood Ave, but that's, that's something that's happening.
Correct, but is it a select board goal?
No, I, I mean.
Is there a select board goal related to that?
It's the, with the streets.
Complete Streets.
Yeah, Complete Streets program really kicked it off.
And the BPAC is like that, you know, there's a bicycle, what is it, the, the study that's just finishing up for the, for the bicycle lanes and then.
The master plan?
Yeah, the master plan, sorry.
Oh, we haven't even started that. Okay, but they had a whole.
Trail system?
No, but they, they'll have a lot of time doing that and community outreach.
I mean, Foster Street's going to kick it off for the state, on that end, that's going to have the walk lane, the bike lane, the.
I guess I'm saying, like, do we just try to delegate this to the committees that are responsible and ask for reports?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Elder and Human Services, build the center, yeah, we know that, everyone said it. You know, it would be great to get monthly updates, I just, you know, I put your name on it because you have the most experience in building municipal buildings.
Probably quarterly until we have to meet monthly.
Yeah, exactly. Public Safety, there really wasn't anything except revisit work done on mental health and substance abuse, collaborate with EHS, LBD, LFD schools to educate and provide services. So, I talked to, I actually had coffee with Pannard this morning, and he talked about the task force they're working on with Ed and Liz to deal with, you know, emergent situations, like emergency situations, which I think is part of, part of that. But do you think there's something different here?
I definitely think there's something different there, because that, what they're dealing with, at least of late, is more hoarding and that kind of thing where.
Dangerous living situations, yeah.
Food insecurities and things like that, yeah, this is, this is more, I mean, pretty active a few years ago.
Yeah, so we started the, when I first got on the board, Chase and I had the, our initiative was to help combat the opioid crisis. Through that process, we came up with the Littleton Coalition Against Addiction. Anthony was involved in that process and we put that, we moved that under the umbrella of EHS, and so Nicole has been spearheading that. She's actually grown that now to have, she has support groups for parents dealing with children, you know, that have addiction issues. She has a grandparents' support group for grandparents who now have to come in and take care of their grandchildren because their.
Their kids have addiction issues.
Yeah, exactly, I did a whole bunch of video interviews, stopped the stigma, started conversation with people in Littleton that had overcome addiction or had dealt with addiction issues, but I, I mean, EHS, if you get on the Littleton Coalition Against Addiction website, it's on Facebook, their Facebook page, they're very, very active with combating those mental health and substance abuse issues in Littleton. And I think it would be great to maybe see what's more, what more we can do to support them and help get the word out there for them, because I think a lot of people, maybe, we have so many new people moving to town, maybe they don't know that they're.
Where are we at with it, too?
Resources.
So, is the goal to, you know, magnify this, their, their reach, or like, yeah, what's the select board goal on that, do you think? What, what did you have in mind when you wrote that?
Focus.
Just to be sure that the resources are available for EHS, LBD, LFD, the schools to, we had a movie night with, with a question and answer session.
Yeah, that was great.
And so, do we reach out to them proactively and ask them if they need something, or is this just more like, well, when they come to us, we're sensitive to it?
Liz is going to be here on Monday night, you may want to just throw this, obviously not going to deliberate it, is not to decide on, but you can ask that question while she's asking for, do you accept a, a grant and talk about the senior tax program program, that you just pitch that to her, maybe she'll have some ideas and bring it back to our future meeting or so, what have you.
And there is a wellness, a wellness committee at the schools, it's a huge group, and they're always doing things, so.
I think also, like, you know.
Yeah.
The police, the fire chief with, with his, with his, his service dog is very focused on, I mean, that's specifically about his, his crew, but that can be a resource for the schools, for the, for the police department, for the town, whoever, so I think that, that it's nice to see both the chiefs are really focused on that.
At the school level, Julie Elmore has a service dog that she's in school with every day, she's at all the sporting events over there.
That's great, okay.
She's there, yeah.
So, okay, so, yeah, again, so do you think we need a, we need a goal or, or just be mindful of it?
I guess as long as we're mindful of it, and we don't see a lot of line items for, I mean, if there is more that we could be doing, if there is a program like the Nate Sople.
Clay Soper.
Clay Soper.
Yeah, I would.
If there's any other programs like that, I know that, who's the kid, Danny, was it Danny Herring, the basketball player?
Basketball player.
From Fall River, I think it was, you know, he, he would do a speaking circuit, if there's some, some.
Right.
Grant money available, budget dollars available that we can subsidize to make sure that we, we're, that's part of public safety, right?
Right, so.
There's matching funds or something like that, yeah.
We could actually buy the Clay Soper film, you can buy the film, and I know this falls on the schools, but I just know from personal experience and the message that is shown through that film, I, I would just love to have that shown to every graduating senior before they go to college. I don't know about you guys and your kids, but my kids used to talk to me about it all the time, you know, kids, they take their Adderall and then they go out drinking, they don't think twice about it.
Or they take three of their Adderall.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, that is something we could do, but then that falls on the schools and we have to get them to buy into it and all that, so.
So, are all these groups collaborating on their own, or do we have to help facilitate it?
They're all, so that Wellness Committee through the schools, they're, they're, yeah, Matt Pannard's part of that, I, and I assume EHS is, but maybe that's something that we should find out about.
Let's talk to Liz about it on Monday and ask her for, maybe, maybe we can invite her back for an update or for a report on what, like, how they're collaborating with the town departments.
I think it would be great to have Nicole come in and talk about what she's been doing, too.
All right, last, last batch, the first three, Cindy or you, they're basically veteran, like, veteran memorial work?
Yeah.
So, I, sure, go, go for it.
I'm kind of involved in these indirectly on the other end, so it's.
Yeah, right?
Both.
And then Chuck hosts a summit surrounding communities, and so I just put your name on that.
Yeah, that's tied into the regionalization thing.
Oh, Board of Chairs.
Board of Chairs?
Board of Chairs, that's what it's called.
So close.
Thank you for watching, Diane.
So, we, so we have, so that's it, like, actually, I was hoping we'd be done by 8:30, so we're actually early. To go back, what I, what I'd like to do is, I'm going to send this around and I want to sort of find a way to get everybody looking at what they signed up for, because it's going, some people, it's going to be a big list, some people, it's going to be a small list, and that's fine, and, but maybe there's horse trading, or maybe there's other things you want to do. I just, I want to make sure we are aware of what's going to be completed and what isn't in a timely fashion.
And it's important to understand, this is, these are our collective goals, so although we have a captain or a champion to get, to get to the finish line, any one of us can help.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, you're going to circulate, not through a clean version and.
Yes, I'm going to circulate it.
Trunk down or?
And then I think the other thing is, I didn't put dates in, but for the things that we can identify with the dates, I'd like to have people suggest, okay, I can have this done by, by this time, and then we'll come back to it at a meeting and, and find out whether it's done or not. Does anyone feel like there's things that were, we didn't cover here? Like, things that you wanted, like, you know, to your point earlier about if, if you had known.
Yeah, so, when, if you're going to recirculate it, that's perfect.
Okay.
Because then I want to look back at, like, the department head meeting and just have, have a second set of eyes on it, just a chance to review it and go back through it, so there may be, there may not be, I just don't know.
Just to generate again for the 27, kind of just summarize it and a short little.
I'll recirculate it in the next day or two.
And in there, I, I mean, are we discussing how this translates into some of his goals as well?
Yes, I think, I think that we mentioned, I think there were one or two that we thought about. But I want to come up with a, with a process for figuring out how these goals are going to be determined, that was one of my goals.
Okay.
Right.
I have two, I have two things, we, at a meeting, a meeting that you were absent, we were doing the select board committee assignments, and I don't know if we want to go back and make sure we, everyone stole, we have the right assignments.
I forgot what they were.
I, I do, too, but, but I'm not even sure that everyone's, all of the committees had an assignment that were coming out of that, or we just put Chuck on all the ones that we didn't want to, no one else. But the other thing I would say is for what, all of the committees that are appointed, like sustainability and AGCOM and things, we should have a liaison, too, for them, whether or not that means you're going to the meetings or not, but at least they have someone on the select board. the select board that they know, if there's something, I'm gonna contact this person, right? And then, and then we can ship it, distribute it from there, but at least they have a body that they know how to reach. So, and we didn't go through assignments like that, but we should, right?
So we probably can't put that on the agenda for Monday, but we can do it for the meeting after.
But if we're going to go through and finalize these, we can do it at the same.
Yes.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.